Thank you. Shall we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember to go ahead? Councilmember Weeks?
Here.
Councilmember Lumper? Vice Mayor Limpers?
Here.
Mayor Lewis?
Here.
So, um, thank you so much. We have a presentation today that I'm happy but sad to make. One of our long-time residents and pioneers passed away after a very, very full life. And so, um, I, her husband is here. Ron, can I come down and read this to you and give you this proclamation? It's so nice to see his, her good friends. So come over here, Will, and I'll, I'll read this to you. This is for your dearly departed wife, Nanette Nan Chapman. So whereas the town of Atherton would like to recognize Nanette Nan Chapman for her years of service to the Atherton community. Nan was a resident of Atherton for thirty-six years and became the very first woman to successfully run for-
She was the first woman to run.
To run, not even successfully, and successfully to run for and be elected to the Atherton City Council.
She'd been the incumbent mayor.
Did she? God bless her. She paved the way for us, didn't she? Whereas Nan served on the Atherton City Council from April fifteenth nineteen eighty through November sixteenth two thousand. Now, everybody can do the math, that's twenty years. And then she served as mayor from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen eighty-eight, which is a two-year term. And then again, from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand. And whereas Nan began her volunteer career by serving on the Board of Directors from the Omegas de las Americas, Family Service in Mid Peninsula, the Vista Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired, and the Junior League of Palo Alto Mid Peninsula. She was an early member of the Atherton Crime Prevention Force. And whereas Nan dedicated her time and effort to numerous organizations and charities, including the Menlo Charity Horse Show, of which she was a founding member, along with our other resident, Betsy Gluckbar. Thank you so much. She served for forty-six years as a committee member, during which time over six million dollars has been raised for the Vista Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired from the Menlo Circus Club Charity Horse Show. Whereas Nan's contributions to the citizens of Atherton and surrounding jurisdictions have been invaluable, and she has made lasting friendships and positive impressions on those with whom she has been associated. So now, therefore, I, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Atherton, I do hereby commend Nanette Nan Chapman on her exemplary record of leadership as a member of the Atherton City Council, and extend our sincere condolences to Nan's family and her passing.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, please.
Well, I just want to add-
Yes, sir.
That I have had the honor of reading all of the clippings that are in the Atherton Historical Association on the City Council. And there is a very large file on Nan Chapman because she made such a substantial contribution to this town. Uh, it, it's truly remarkable how much she did for the town and how she provided leadership for women to get involved in the civic world in the town. I, 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 thank you very much for your welcome.
Any other councilmembers want to say anything? Do we have any public comments on this? Well, I'm gonna open the floor for public comments anyway. So if any member of the public would like to speak, now's the time.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. I am Susan Masetti, former president of the Friends of Holbrook Palmer Park, and I've had the pleasure of appearing before you previously. But tonight, I am here to share good news and very exciting news about the Carriage House and the Water Tower. As you are aware, the Friends commissioned a historical architect, Christopher Verplanek, to submit a nomination to place both the Water Tower and the Carriage House on the National Registry of Historic Places. Well, on April eighteenth, the California State Historical Resources Commission met in San Francisco and unanimously approved the nomination. The nomination has now been sent to the keeper of the National Register in Washington, DC for official listing on the National Register. So congratulations, hooray! And the Friends think that this is a notable accomplishment and an honor for the buildings, for the park, and for our town. So the Friends would like to commission two plaques, one for the Water Tower, one for the Carriage House, which recognizes honor and their historical importance. And in the packet that the Friends submitted earlier this week, we submitted a proposed plaque of a size and language. But today, I received a mock-up of what it will look like with the correct type of font, but it'll be larger, which you have now in front of you, hopefully. And it's a custom plaque where we're going to add the name of the house and when it was built. So this part down here is custom. This is pretty much standard language up here. And this is what the plaque should look like, should the town want them. But it'll be the size of this piece of paper less half an inch, because it's eleven by eight. And we're proposing, the plaques that we are proposing will complement the current plaques, which are on both of the buildings. And even outside here, if you'd like to see the historical ones, I have a bad picture of one attached to our packet. It's an eight by eight. Our proposal is an eight by eleven. There are other sizes, but we thought an eight by eight stylistically would look very nice on both buildings. And so that is our proposal, but I mainly am here to simply congratulate the town on this honor that we now have for our two buildings. And if you, the town desires to have these plaques, the Friends are happy to commission them.
Thank you, Susan. Well, from the council, I want to say I'm very happy. And you and the Dings, Friends of the Holbrook Palmer Park, have really done a great job on this. And it's an honor to have these buildings be put on the register, in my personal opinion. Uh, I think that it's a great, great thing that you guys have done. So thank you so much. I have one quick question I want to ask about, is there anywhere we could put Town of Atherton on the plaque?
Oh, excuse me. That's not on the agenda.
See, I knew he was gonna do that, but I had to put it out there.
We can't approve, I, I appreciate the offer. If the council is interested, we can bring it back at the next meeting, but we can't take action on tonight.
Well, that was the answer to my question.
Yes.
I said, like, see it next time we set?
Good.
Well, why wouldn't we have the, uh, the committees and the foundation make a recommendation with, you know, you present it to the foundation, the park and rec, and, and then the city manager would work with the chairman of those organizations to, to do that.
You got to plug your council ideas over there.
I think that, yeah.
And then that- I want to commend Susan for her leadership on this issue. You've really taken the brunt of this, you've made it happen. I thi, I agree with everything you said. It's very good for the Friends, it's good for the park, it's good for the town. I think it's great.
So I, you know, I just don't want to make it so cumbersome and put it before park and rec, uh, you know, I-
Of course, it's part of the city management.
Yeah.
Uncomfortable with, that, that's well. Or I could work with the two council reps that serve on those two committees. One with the foundation and that's the park.
Sure. How does council feel about that?
We're not taking an option.
We're not taking an option.
No, we're not taking an option. Providing city manager direction.
In a, in a general sense, if it was offered as a sort of hypothetical question came my way, I'd say this is exciting and whatever's the least cumbersome.
Whatever would make it happen.
Whatever could be the least cumbersome, that's what I thought.
I'll just go with people who enjoy it this summer.
Absolutely.
I'll work with those.
The city manager will figure out how to make it happen.
Susan, thank you. And thank you for bringing your staff along, you know?
I needed an audience.
Yes, you needed an audience. Thank you, guys, for having a lot.
Thank you.
Well, we know how to make things. Counselor. Okay, so we'll move on to our report out of closed session. We'll let our city attorney speak again.
Madam Mayor, there were two items on the closed session tonight. Uh, council talked about the first ones, conference with labor negotiator, labor negotiations pursuant to government code section five nine, five four nine, five seven point six. City manager gave a briefing, there was no action. Council get the, the public employee performance evaluation, they ran out of time.
Right, okay. So there's a city manager's report. I'm number six.
Okay, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have written a report for you. We're sure to answer any questions you might have. You did get my follow-up email. We're no significant comments during any of our one-on-ones. It was just some notes on the losing activities and whatever. So I'm happy to touch on it, if you'd like.
Any member of the council want to make a comment about the city manager's report? Any member of the public? I just want to, uh, just refer to the Atherton Fiber blurb. And I would just want to know what more we're doing to, you know, stimulate interest with Atherton Fiber.
You have two members of the council that serve on that as a subcommittee, and they had a meeting yesterday.
Yeah.
Yes.
We, we, there's been a number of articles, and, and we spoke to the president and, and the founder, really, of Atherton Fiber. Uh, we want to make sure that there's clear understanding of what's going to happen and when. And so they're going to prepare an FAQ. Uh, and, and we'll post it on the, our website, and they're gonna have it on their website. Uh, and we'll all be briefed on that. Uh, and then on top of that, um, they made a request, and I passed that on to the city manager, that perhaps in our newsletter, when we send it out, we again ask the people and make them aware of the survey that's going on now, which is helping them to identify what neighborhoods to start first. Uh, and so they're starting, uh, you know, the city manager said he would, uh, he would do that. Um, so we're moving in that direction, and I think, and we, both Rick and I had promised that, really, I think all of us are being asked by residents, what's happening here? Because there's been these news articles. Um, and, um, and, you know, we need to just point them and make sure that they fill out the survey. Because that's really the driving issue, that they said eighty people had applied to the survey. Fifty people said they wanted to buy the, um, the, the fiber package, or not buy it, but subscribe to the Four Fiber Package. Uh, so that's a good start, but it's, we need to really get things going now. And they're waiting on the city attorney's office and our subcontracted attorney to finish finalizing. And then from the time that we get an agreement, it's gonna be a two or three month process of getting actually breaking ground and things like that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna, because I'm a Mr. Technology, put some-
No, you're not.
Wasn't meant for everybody to laugh. But, uh, I mean, since all, all the news reports lately have been, we started off, nobody was talking about fiber when we originally had this whole thing going on. We seemed to be the first, and now we seem to be following the bus. Everybody else is launching.
Yeah.
And we're a city that was progressive. So whatever, whatever my colleagues need to do through the city manager and their, his report to make this happen quicker.
Have you filled out the survey?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, see, that's, that's one of the problems, I think, because I just filled out the survey.
Well, we could put it on next door. I, I think that, uh-
It gets on next door.
Well, we're all in different areas, okay? Like, I'm in the Menlo Park area, which-
Right.
And we talked about maybe having people from other jurisdictions be able to apply. And I said, no, no, at this point in time, but-
Right.
But if we get as much, as many of the, uh, the social media things as, other than what the town is on the pitch, and to get some interest.
Fine, do you want to add something?
Yeah. So I thought that the most meaningful thing that came out of the technology committee meeting this week was that Atherton Fiber announced that they expect to begin construction on the home office, which would go, uh, as I understand it, is subject to the contract that they're doing with the town on the par, the city parcel near the courtyard. And, uh, that will take them about three months. And by the time that they finish that, they will have the engineering close to be done to do the first deployment. And the first deployment will be to the homes immediately around this area. So those folks need to sign up. They need to get a threshold of a number of people to sign up in order to justify deploying the fiber to the areas. After that, they're going to choose which neighborhoods to deploy to in the town on a prioritization based on which, which area has the most subscribers in it. They're gonna deploy first to those areas that have more subscribers, and then, and then hopefully encourage other areas to increase the rate of subscription, because they're only gonna deploy if it's, if it makes economic sense, because it's expensive to go into the ground and do all the latest fiber. So I agree with what Carrie said, we need to get this information out every way we can. And that's, I mean, it's exciting that it's moving forward. I, I do think that we've lost some time in the last year because it's moved slowly, but it's now moving forward, and they're in discussions with the town.
Well, I think the other important thing is that they announced also, if I, if I might add, um, they believe they're gonna have at least ninety percent underground. That's their target at this point in time, which I think, really, if they could, if they could make that happen based on the engineering, that would be a, a major coup here for us, because we have too many wires all over the place. But still being worked on, but they were hoping that that's, Robert, uh, who's the CEO, felt that, uh, that was, that was doable, and so.
All right, um, moving on, there's no committee organization on the table. Report consent calendar, items eight through thirteen. Any, uh, members of the council have a question or comment on any of those items?
Um, I have a comment on item eleven and thirteen. And we went very deep.
Anybody else?
Uh, just a comment on town.
Okay, so anybody else? Any member of the public have a comment on items eight through thirteen in the consent calendar? So Bill, would you like to make your comments first, item number eleven?
Eleven was, and George covered it in his letter, but I want to make sure that he will, you know, the instruction. Does it count on the bicycles and the number of pedestrians that are transversing El Camino or the other two? Because that will help, uh, with us to size things and determine the real need.
Okay.
Okay? Then on thirteen, uh, there was an item there that says, do we, does the council have the pleasure of two hundred or four hundred? And it never really said what the staff recommended, so I'm, I'm of the, the mind that fewer words are better.
I think what we've done in the past is four hundred, isn't it? Is all of them two? Okay, all right. Is that, so, how does members of the council feel about making that limitation two hundred, rather than four hundred?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll add that. And Carrie?
Um, my comments are really on, like I said, item number ten. Uh, one, I want to thank staff, Mary Grace, I know you're a new player in this game, and the importance of the sewer district issue, and I mentioned it to the town manager related to cambering the lines. I think this is a great opportunity to partnership up and get two birds with one stone, because the cluster we're dealing with was related to that roadway. So thank you for looking into that and, and looking into the other issues that could compound our problem if we hit something that goes underneath our channel. So thank you for your efforts on that, staff and Mike as well, so.
So city manager, is that able to be put into the contract?
So, Mary Grace might be looking at it generally sideways, because I haven't yet communicated with her yet about the electric lines. But the issue that government numbers talking about is that line that you advised went actually under the channel in some way. We're gonna be insulated that line as the channel moves along. It would be a good idea to video the condition of that line-
It will be.
Prior to the project.
Yeah, and, and as I mentioned, sorry, sorry, maybe, so I have a, I was talking to my kids. Anyways, with that being said, you know, with looking ahead and polyethylene bursting that line, whatever it takes, because going through this again at any other point in time, so we have an opportunity with exposure to the channel, the impact we're already creating, to do whatever defensive ball with the sewer district, uh, because doing it later really is not a great option for us, for the community and the surrounding community. So I do know that you've been working hard on that through your boss.
Thank you.
Great job.
Oh, and now, council, Nancy.
I have a question on this. So maybe I misunderstood it. When I read this, I had thought that this was talking about a sewer line that was under the street. And since the street was going to be ripped up as related to the work on the channel, instead of ripping up the street twice, we just rip it up once. And, and only, we only wanted one contractor to do it, so there wouldn't be, uh, conflict.
You're, you're absolutely correct. There's two issues at play with the sewer line. Mary Grace, would you explain that if you like?
Sorry, I'm just-
So, good evening, everybody. So we are coordinating with the sewer district, two, two issues. One, there is a line, a main line, that crosses underneath the channel about halfway down. Um, it's actually in conflict with our con, construction. So we're actually replacing about twenty feet of it, putting it in a steel case and a new section. Then the sewer district has videoed the lines, and that line and the line in Marsh Road that parallels the channel, both are in need of remediation. So this agreement is to allow the town to make a change order with the contractor so that the lining of the line between Fair Oaks and Middlefield can be done. That's a trunk main that's eighteen inch to twenty-four inch. And then they also are going to line the line that goes into Lindenwood about midway. So after we do the replacement of the one piece, they're actually gonna go through and line the whole thing. So that line and that section will be remediated, and it will cause a second closure of the road. So I, I do have to commend our contractor for even considering adding this to their contract and not extending the time at their contract. This is a really big deal.
And just for the record, those costs are gonna be sewer district cost, council.
That is correct.
So therefore, you know, with all this extra work, we are extending the two birds with one stone. And have no additional cost to the town.
Making it safer on the road.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the, the town will actually have some benefit, because the sewer district is gonna share in the traffic control costs, so that'll benefit us, that we get a little help there.
Hey, that's good. And thank you so much, Mary Grace.
I have a question related to the piece of that sewer replacement that I was addressing, which is, I know some towns have a policy that when one agency is going to rip up a road, that every, all other agencies that are, that have deployments in that town, uh, in, in their, in the roads, somewhere in that town are informed, so that if they want to put something in that, uh, open hole, they could, they can. I, do we have that?
We do not, and I don't think it's an open hole at this point, because there's slip line.
No, it's not.
They're gonna-
They're gonna-
Hyper-sticking.
Right, they're, they're actually gonna do a lining, they're gonna work from manhole to manhole. So they put in a, it's, I can't tell you exactly what material this one is gonna be in. It's usually some kind of linen, something with a lot of plastic stuff in it. And they line it into the, um, sections between the manholes, and then they put a steam plant that causes it to expand and, uh, solidify and, and fix that pipe, basically. Then they will be going in and reopening for where the laterals are, uh, so that stays all operational.
And, I'm sorry, but George, you, George, you mentioned in case if concrete is-
Protected, the one that's going under the-
The one that's going under the channel, s- since the channel will now be there. Uh, what we're doing is we're putting a steel casing for approximately fifteen, twenty feet that will go under the channel. We actually have a modified section of our, of our channel for about two feet, um, so that the weight of the channel is not on the pipe. It'll transition, little grade beams on either side. And then within that steel casing will be what we call the carrier pipe, the actual sewer pipe itself. And it'll be a, um, material called C nine hundred. It's basically a PVC plastic type pipe. And that'll extend outside the limits of the new channel, and then have concrete collars that attach it to the existing pipe. And then once that's all done, the sewer district, uh, as part of this whole project, will then slip line from manhole to manhole. So manhole in Lindenwood to the manhole in the middle of Marsh, and make it all lined so that it will be good for many, many moons.
For our wet towns.
Yeah.
So, uh, one thing, we, we brought this up, I, I think before you were actually, um, were on board here, George, but it, it, along the lines with what Rick brought up, you know, we do the patching, and then we do the slurry seal on top of it. And almost inevitably, right after we're done with that, somebody comes along and asks to tear up the roads. I would think that, you know, if we could notify the people who have utilities underneath there and say, you know, please understand we're doing this, and if you want to do something, this is the time to do it. And, and else we may ask you to wait. Um, because invariably, I mean, every time we do it, at, at least one of those roads immediately has a, a hole punched in it.
We do have a moratorium policy sometime for many of our roadways. Middlefield is the one I know has one.
So we should maybe extend it, consider extending it, it's for a future item, but maybe extend it and then do a more collaborative thing, which is you've done here with the water district, et cetera, and, and try and get this, you know-
Pretty good.
That's the one, whatever.
The common.
I mean, there are other towns that have, there are other towns that have, uh, uh, an ordinance that covers this, that requires that notice, and maybe we should look into that.
All right. So, um, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar, items eight through thirteen, with incorporating the comments that have been received?
So who?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions, any needs? Motion passed. Public hearing for your agenda, items fourteen and fifteen. We'll take item fourteen first, the civic center status update. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mike Kachmaki.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, for this item, in addition to providing the status report, we are asking the council, um, to take some actions. One is to approve the Civic Center schematic design. Uh, the second is to authorize the city manager, manager to execute a contract amendment for, uh, the design development phase of the project with WRNS Studios in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And finally, uh, for the council to accept the cost estimate or direct the CCA to work with, um, our architects and staff to make design changes consistent with whatever council direction's gonna be.
Thank you. So, um, I would like, since there are three specific action items on the agenda, I would like to just take them one at a time and not, uh, mix them up, okay? So if we could just, uh, look at the civic center schematic design and discuss that and approve that, then we can go forward. And so does any council member have any questions for staff on that one portion of the agenda item?
Review the schematic?
Yes, civic center schematic design. Any clarifying questions? I'm gonna open up to the, uh, public for comment first, and then we'll bring it back for our discussion.
Process question.
Yes.
Which, I don't know, it's appropriate to direct to. What is the schedule, or the anticipated schedule of the council to see future iterations? What would we be seeing as the designs get finalized and move forward? What about the council?
In the design development?
Yes.
The design development phase, I think it's typically three to four months.
Yeah. So we're working with the consultant right now just to fine tune what that looks like over the next several months. I, I would say you're probably looking realistically at something four to six months, depending on how much iteration goes back and forth with the town. Um, but we, we are fine tuning. We got a first draft from the architect today saying, okay, here was the original scope, and here was the plan. They've been working with the town now for a good number of months, have a good feeling for the folks and what have you, and kind of where things are, and are understanding maybe the level of iteration that would be beneficial to the town to end up with a really great final product that everyone will be happy with. And that may mean just a little bit more time in each to end up with a, a product that really is successful. So, um-
So I love, I, I just want to, uh, bring your attention to, uh, something in your agenda packet, which is the project schedule and design development. It is anticipated the design development kickoff meeting would be, um, June third, and they're anticipating seventy-eight days. And there is a, uh, you know, item by item progress of what the architects, uh, Mac Five, you know, kind of anticipate, uh, it will take to go through design development.
But that's, that's a perfect world, and I think what Mary Grace was saying is that's gonna be- But that's, that's a perfect world. And I think what Mary Grace was saying is that's gonna be longer.
Yeah, well.
I, I think it's realistic and it's beneficial to the town. If, with these types of things, if we allow for adequate time for the architect to meet with CCAC, the CCAC subcommittee staff, whatever those various meetings are, and then incorporate the information into design, get it back to the town to basically do a quality assurance. Did they interpret what we were saying correctly? Is it there? And allow for those prob, those iterations so that they're successful. The reality is that it constantly just takes a certain amount of time just to implement those changes and produce something. So, I, I would anticipate it's gonna be a little bit longer than the seventy-eight days. I think it's gonna be closer to around six months. But I think you'll get a lot more successful product out of it. People will feel that they have been able to contribute and they were a part of that whole process.
I think Mike's follow-up is, so what, what are we actually, what are they gonna see exactly in the design development?
Okay, so, we're working with the consultant right now to identify, I just sent them an email today saying, okay, where are we gonna be coming back to council with updates along during the process? So, I, I would expect that monthly, we're bringing an update to you and staff will be able to present, here's, here's where we are. And then, the architect, what I was recommending to the architect was they plan on coming to attend one or two council meetings during that six month period, so they can speak to you in their architectural terms and, and what they're seeing from their creative eye of, here's where we are, here's the information we still need. This is what we're working on. This is where we are. So, you will get a monthly update and what that will look like is to what is defined already. You've basically just find the skin. You've given the look and feel of here's how the building is going to look. There's some things still to work out on the inside. There's some things to work out with the landscape, so those outdoor rooms still need to gel and get the feel that the town is looking for. The lobby still needs some work. You know, all the space is there. It's been programmed. It's just kinda how maybe some of the offices are configured or something to get that fine tuned and make sure it works with the operation. So, we'll be bringing, here's what the updated floor plan, here's, here's what we've seen, here's the input we've gotten from staff, here's the input from the CCAC and how it's been incorporated. So, that'll look in floor plans. And then, as we're moving through design development, one of the tasks of the CCAC is to make sure that that outside doesn't change, 'cause that's been solidified now, that look, you know. You might have something that moves slightly, but the intent, that look, that feel is not going to be drastically different. So.
It's not gonna become an ultra-modern.
No.
So.
So, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I'm just, just, I'm trying to keep in a focus. So, if we approve the schematic design, that means the shell right now would be locked in and therefore, the only changes that we would be able to do to the shell could be really minor. Anything?
Yeah, you're gonna have the look and feel. As you do this fine tune through design development, the architect starts looking at the practicality of how you're really gonna build it. So, you might have something moved just slightly, but it's still, if you compared the elevations, the outside elevations of the building in six months to what you see now, you'd be able to say, yes, that, that still is what we intended. The other element that we'll be coming back to you with, and I wanna make sure we address this, 'cause it's an important issue, is with the quote-unquote green of the building, there's what we call baseline green. Those are the things that are required through the California Building Code. Those are, those are not really negotiable. They're what we need to comply with Title twenty-four. We're asking the consultant to say, okay, let's help everybody understand what this is. Let's understand baseline. Here's what we need to do to meet code. Here's the things that were done that are passive elements that through having an architect who understands green building and what have you, they've oriented the building in a way to be as energy efficient as possible. Those are zero cost because those are just orientation and how things are, are aligned. Then, there's the, what we call low hanging fruit. There's the things you can do that are very cost effective that, that could be considered by council for, yes, let's incorporate that into design or, or what have you. And then, there's the larger elements, the ones that are a little bit more creative. Those would be opportunities for grant matching and things, and those are things that council may wanna consider. You know, we wanna consider this, but let's put it as an ad alternate, so that once the bids come in, we can decide if we really wanna incorporate that system or not into the plan. So, we'll be coming back sometime midpoint here with that analysis to help, help council understand. All right, here's the base features, here's this, here's this, in good direction.
Yeah, in staff report, there's just, I guess, two, two, two questions. One is in the staff report, you talk about the library expanding to an additional thousand feet. And I, I, I know that, I wasn't sure if it was really because of the addition of this space here being then allocated to the library. Is that the thousand feet roughly?
Yes.
Because this is eighteen hundred feet, but, okay. But that's, that's what that number came from with this.
That's correct.
So, all you're doing is you're just allocating these feet to the library and then, and then changing the allocation, looking at the, how the site costs are gonna be allocated out to the library funds versus the other funds.
That is correct.
Not an expansion of the building, which is how it was read here, but I didn't, okay.
That is.
All right, so secondly, I, I understand what you're saying. I know we've looked at the, the outside of the design, you know, before and we've kinda said, yeah, it looks good. We like it. I did take the time to look up what a schematic design definition is in the architectural dictionary. And it does say that it actually, it's schematic designs and, and diagrams giving the view of the components and the scale of those components within the project. So, I think there's some additional information with regards to the details. So, I, you know, I just wanna make sure that, you know, from my view, we're not approving just the picture. I think we've already agreed that, hey, you know what, the thing, the Santa Barbara style roof, very, very attractive, the way we've laid it out on the, on the, on the field in this area here, extremely attractive, very impressive, and, and that's, that's great. But, you know, the, the, the book that we were asked to read with a hundred and eighty-five pages and it had a lot more detail in it than just the, the picture, because the pictures were like three of them. So, I think there's more to it than just approving the picture.
Well, and I'll, I'll relay what the architect has relayed to me as they've moved through the schematic design process. And that is, there was a lot of detail that was looked at, more than you normally look at in a schematic design. That's in part why it got to be a little bit longer process, that they dove into actual window reveals and details with respect to some of the exterior elements that normally you would do in the next phase. So, there's actually been some DD, what we call design development, already completed within schematic sign and the town's benefited from that. You can see that detail in that schematic design report. So, it gives you a little bit more. They've also presented in that report, they've identified things that they've said, here, here are options. So, they, they've created a lot of detail in there, but when you look at the titles and that's particularly with respect to some of these green elements. They've, they've included a lot of detail with respect to some of these alternative mechanical systems. It's a lot to do with the mechanical systems. Those aren't designed in by any means at this time. Those are things that are just in there for information of, okay, these are things that have been discussed and what have you. And like I say, when we come back to you here in the next couple of months, we'll be coming back with that list of, all right, here's the code compliant elements, here's, and it'll address those items as, these are things you can consider. How would you like us to proceed? Do you want them to be ad alternates? Do you wanna not even consider them at all? And that'll be council's decision.
Any other comments?
So, if we approve this schematic design, are we approving in effect the footprint of the building if we have questions?
Pretty close. There might be some, you know, you know, there might be some fine tuning to, it's not gonna get larger. I'll, I'm sure of that. Can we fine tune it to pull things in a little bit? Probably.
But is now the time to raise issues like that or would that be down the road?
If council wants to give direction to consider, then that, this would be the time to give direction and say what a goal was.
So, Mr. DeGol, did you have any comment on this?
The only comment I'll make is that the thousand square foot increase in library is a net number. This, this building is more than a thousand feet, as you said. The main library was reduced in size because this serves as the library's multipurpose room.
So, just this room, not the, the side rooms?
Yeah, but this whole, this whole building, including the side, yeah, this room will be the multipurpose room. But this whole building, including the side rooms, is, I'm not sure, about two thousand feet.
Right, yeah, it's eighteen hundred.
Quite a bit more than the thousand feet, but that's a net number.
Okay, so you reduce the size of the.
The, the main library was reduced in design.
Yeah, that wasn't clear. That's why, that question, I had to.
Yes, that, that's a good point.
Okay, so, my, my comment about approving the schematic design. I'm, I'm happy to approve the schematic design with the direction to city manager, to the consultants, to the CCAC committee, that we look at reducing the size of, say, the new council chambers, figuring out a way to, in the interior planning, like we were talking to the city manager and he put it in his notes to us to reduce. I don't feel comfortable by saying a percentage. I want it to be reduced to the extent where it is the most efficient. And if it's ten percent or fifteen percent or twenty percent, that would be good. But, you know, maybe say a minimum of, but it's gotta work and to work with the CCAC and the consultants to really look and scrub the layout and floor plan, so that the project can be reduced. But overall, and like the landscaping, we're not approving the landscaping and, and the indications on the landscape plan, like the cedar play area. That, that, I just wanna make that very clear, you know, the outdoor areas, because I don't, I don't want to approve that. I mean, the schematic as far as, you know, look and feel of the building, the orientation of it. But if, it can be tweaked to make the lobby and the front entrance and the rear entrance, you know, be more aligned. So, that is a more architectural pleasing and reducing the size of the, the new council chambers and taking the EOC out and making it part of the police configuration by combining a couple of rooms that, in the event of an emergency, 'cause we don't use EOC every day or every month. But we use the training room and the other staff room. So, that would be my only direction for CCAC.
So, more comment section? I thought we just do a question.
I think, I think it did, I think it went.
Okay.
I have comments.
I've got comments too. Whoa, I.
Shall we open it for public comment then?
Yeah, please.
Okay, 'cause I thought these were. Any public comment?
No.
Seventy-six fifty-nine.
Seventy-six fifty-nine.
Eighty-one sixty-one. Eighty-one sixty-one.
Are we on the top side?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I feel better.
Okay, we're bringing it back.
You'll prove.
Comment.
Okay, so, your comment about wanting to reduce the size of the council chambers, I, I don't really know how to relate to that. That's the first time I ever heard that brought up. I, I don't have the basis to say I think the council chamber should be reduced. Have, has there been discussion to remove the EOC from the council chambers?
It's just been part of some one-on-one conversations about the council chambers perceptually being too large. And if there was anywhere within the town administration, building, police department, et cetera, maybe that ten percent number, fifty percent, whatever the mayor is talking about, we could shrink some of those public spaces like the council chambers, combine some rooms within the police department, shrink the lobby a little bit. There, there's a basic program need that we have to meet, so scrub that, so we can make it that has the minimums. But anywhere there's inefficiencies, maybe we could solve it.
I'd like your response for some of that. Let me, so when, without addressing the EOC, like, you know, whatever that is, it is, just on the council chamber. As I look at it, it's an eighty-seat council chamber, which I, I mean, look, I can't think of the number of times we've needed anywhere near that. And, and so, it strikes me that a much more cost effi, efficient thing to do, perhaps on a more appropriate scale, would be smaller councils for that purpose. I don't know how it affects the EOC, a smaller council chamber. And on the odd chance that we do have a very, you know, well-attended meeting, we can just video it out to a, to a remote location.
Over the mar building.
Or go somewhere else. So, I, I think I might have been the one, that was sort of my rationale. And again, I'm not addressing the EOC, but just as a council chamber, eighty seats feels like much more than maybe.
There's a balance that was continued in conversation with the CCAC and the community and the council chambers would also develop as a community space and have that indoor/outdoor function. You were part of some of those conversations. So, that's the balance that was trying to be met with the council chambers.
Carrie.
Um, thank you. Yeah, I guess I have a chance to add.
Carrie. Beating yourself.
All right. I will probably have to say that I agree a reduction in, I really wasn't, you know, you know, you see the number and, you know, you got a budget, so you see a number, you got a budget. So, you kind of wanna stay within the line and we're outside of the line. And we gotta get within the line to be more reasonable to the people we serve and on a needs basis. And I, although I like the aesthetic side of the, and I agree from the curb, but we really didn't have the number. So, when you give me the number, then my aesthetic says shrink it, you know, and frankly, I'd like to see the area more consistent with the amount of area that we have. As far as the council chambers, and I will say, I just saw the floor, or the conceptual idea with the floor plan. And so, that also triggered a whole bunch of emotion, time, dying, and trying to figure out, okay, wait a minute. Now I can see what these things are. Well, wait a minute, crush this, get rid of bathrooms and start getting down to where we're down to be more responsive with area. And I also will have to say that, you know, wasn't really pleased with the library, frankly. Not necessarily the aesthetics, the exterior, but frankly, I mean, I think I was probably, if you wanna call it, a little obnoxious 'cause I'm in a library of the future and outside the box and several of us and some of us have been through the Sacred Heart Library and, and the library folds up and blah, blah, blah and it's, you know, empty in a matter of minutes. And I see some of our problems, we're trying to accomplish by having a larger council chamber to accommodate space, have events and do these things, where we own the library or we will eventually own the library or be part of our community, where if we were really thinking outside the box and we're having problems with what we need, let's say there's an earthquake. Well, if we can't fit everybody in here that we need to fit, we got a library that's right here that should be able to disappear and, and EOC can be dropped into a library on a temporary basis, so that we can serve the people within this community within the monies we have. Trying to be flexible but creative with what we have, money, and do things. So, I was kinda going, well, great, you know.
Carrie, I think that, I don't know, I'm maybe speaking out of term, but I think that there may be some problems in thinking about using the library as the EOC.
Well, I think that anytime there's an emergency, we use what we have and.
Remember, EOCs also have to be built to police department standards and you really don't wanna impose that cost on the library building.
Well, and when we do the mock, sorry, but when we do the mock stuff and we're sitting in a trailer, are you telling me that the trailer, if we're doing?
Currently, currently codes, so the police department has to be built to one of that standards. So does an EOC. You impose it on the library, you've just jacked up that cost.
So, okay, so maybe the EOC was a bad thing to suggest.
Yeah.
But, as far as events and other things, a council chamber that we can have, I mean, I'm sorry, but I could say that, okay, we have a forty-person council chamber here, but we have forty extra seats that are over there. Let's say we knock the eighty to a forty and we have an area over there, we see that there's gonna be a big event. We don't wanna go to the park because we've rented it out to a wedding. And we have a building over here with technology today, boom, you can put them and they can sit down and enjoy it and be in technology and see what we're doing here. If they wanna wash, um, team numbers, that's more, hey, I'm not a member, I'm invested in technology, but what if I, somebody wants to speak at a podium over there? I'm okay with it, looking at a monitor, saying, gosh, we couldn't fit the five hundred people that showed up to this hearing related to the civic center.
You know, you're right, because this will also be like a public, you know, multipurpose room. So, that could be the fee. I'm not quite sure that we could just transform the library.
Don't know, but I'm thinking, I'm just saying things outside the box.
Okay.
So, back to the square footage area. I think that if we had a more reasonable square footage, you know, I know that we did a bump out. I mean, I looked at my drawing and then I went to the previous and I know that we bumped out the first level. If we shrunk things down, but again, we didn't have any of this information related to floor plans to say where we can pinch and move. But I think that there's a process that we need to do. So, with that same tone, and I know that this is less to do with the aesthetic components, but we also were gonna do a breakdown when we haven't provided. but we also were gonna do a breakdown, and we haven't provided that yet, 'cause it's probably not in our possession now, of our app, our alternates, what are the costs of some of these features? And if we knew that, boom.
We're, we're gonna concentrate just on the schematic design right now, okay? All right, go with it, so all that other stuff. So, did you have a chance for your...
I'll let Bill go now.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, first off...
Was he? I, I felt some, I mean, reading back my back, but I just thought you presumably liked me.
I do like you, but I wasn't reading, I wasn't reading on the back. So, so the main thing is this, first off, I did look over the whole document, and I know a number of us did. And there was a...
Because I didn't have it.
Well, I was here, I had to come over to the council and pick it up and sit in the counselor's office and review it in the dark. I didn't have the lights on, didn't wanna drive up the cost, but regardless. Okay, first off, I'm taken back by a couple of things. One was the size and, and some of the scoping information that seemed to have found its way into the document. And that drove the size of the building, that drove the cost of the building. And so for me, we had a two-part thing.
Can I just interrupt a little bit?
Sure.
Does that have to do with the schematic design?
Yeah, it does.
The, the look and feel of the exterior of the building?
I think that a schematic design, as I pointed out, is more than that. So I can't, I can't address the size of the building without talking about a little bit of the inside. I like, I like it, I like it, I like the Santa Barbara, I love the patio and stuff like that. However, I do believe that the scoping, somehow the scoping information that was passed on to the RNS was incorrect and had, had a number of errors in it. I think that, and then when we looked at the price, the price turned out to be a number larger than any number we've been talking about before. And so when you have that problem, you have to de-scope or take your nice-to-haves and go down to, you go to the must-haves, and that's it. And so, so if I could just touch base...
We can talk about that later after the schematic.
Well, okay, but I would like to finish, okay, if I, if I could, please. So I think that there are some things that are real conceived, okay? And we've got, I'm, I'm really surprised that six months later, we have never seen any return on investment in looking at all this net zero stuff, okay? We were supposed to have these options to look at.
But we're not there yet, we're in schematic design, we're not there yet.
Well, the schedule that came to us said we were gonna have to make decisions in January and February. But I'll finish, I'll finish, okay.
But existent, existent.
Then with regards to the library, we have a, we have a quiet area here, but we're gonna have open windows right next to the train. We said that originally, when we were talking about not having the library in the park, that we were gonna make this a soundproofed building, the library. And I realize that impacts the net zero. But, but I do believe that there are some, some key things here that we need to address as we're doing this and not just doing the design, but laying out the cost structure.
It's the schematic design only, we're not talking about all the other things.
Well, I think that they need to lay out the inside to decide how large the outside's going to be. I'd like to see a fifteen or more percent decrease in the building, okay? And I think it's very, very doable, and I think that we should ask them to do it like pronto, in the next month, with maybe one person or two people from the CCAC with staff, but, but working on that to get that done immediately, because time's a-wastin', and we wanna get this project underway. But the first thing here is we gotta get the cost in line, all right?
So...
But I like the outside, since that's all you're interested in, but that's not what schematic design is.
That's what I said. So I'm gonna call for a motion to, did you not, I wanna give you a...
Yeah, but I have to refer, because...
Oh, my gosh, Sam, hi, you threw that to me.
I just... No, I, so, again, hoping I understand what we're looking at, just gonna, right. I, I, the scale of this seems bigger than I would have expected, bigger than, than, might make sense, given some of the other, the other issues involved, such as, you know, the funding, the ultimate dollar number we've gotten, which is higher than we thought. I note that, that right now, and I'm focused primarily on, on the administration building, not the library.
There's no cost issue.
Yeah, that's why I focus on the administration building.
That's a smart thing to do.
And the, and the, it just, this number went up by about twenty-eight hundred square feet. And without getting, this was the only area that I feel like I have any particular expertise on, is I look out at the council meetings and other people here, and so I think eighty seats seems like more than we need for a purpose. But I do think also, I, I would like staff or whomever, the CCA, whoever the appropriate body is, to receive direction to reduce it, and if you're looking at order of magnitude, at that twenty-eight hundred square feet, I don't know how, what percentage that works out to.
Well, just, just to make sure everybody's clear, our current usable square feet for police, building, planning, public works, admin, is eighteen thousand six hundred and forty-one. The current usable space in the new building, including the council chambers, is twenty thousand something, six hundred and forty. So we reduced it by twenty percent. We're now at less space than we currently have.
So that's exactly why I do not want us to cherry pick a percentage and say, reduce it by that amount, because we do not have the information and to accurately be able to program. I have been with this project for many years. We have gone through so many iterations of programming and vetting the, the numbers of square footage for public works, for planning, for admin. It's just the way the building has ended up being designed and the council chambers grew, I think, exponentially. And part of the reason it grew was, well, we had to do an EOC in there, and, you know, we were gonna have it used as a multipurpose room for public, you know, events and stuff. So, but in looking at the floor plans for the first time, you know, we see, and city manager pulled out a couple of areas where there are restrooms in like the admin space, that really don't need to be there, because there's common area restrooms that can be enlarged a little bit, that will accommodate all the visitors and the small amount of employees we have. So there are efficiencies that can be fine-tuned. So what I wanna get back to right now is that we are going to approve, or not, the schematic design, which is kind of like the look and feel of the building as it looks in front and that...
My question, Mary Grace, was, is this the time to address scope and scale issues? And she said, yes.
So if I can give a minor recommendation, 'cause I am hearing what you're saying, I, I think the direction that could possibly be given to staff to work with consultants is to ensure that spaces are as efficient as they can be. Council chambers is one. If we design it to be the efficient space for an EOC, as opposed to possibly focusing on it being a more civic area that could be rented out and indoor/outdoor, there's probably some efficiency that can happen there. And we can look at that through the police area, through the staffing areas. You know, as the city manager's saying, it, when you look at the square footages now and you see people on top of one another, you know that there's some challenges with space. When you look at a footprint of a building and take all of these pieces that are, right now, all separated out and look at them all comprehensive and in one, it does look a little different on, on a floor, on a site plan. So I think the direction to, if, if you are amenable to it, giving us direction to, we need to make the areas as efficient as possible and work within the programming. And then we would bring that back to you, saying, here's the programming, here's the minimums, here's the efficiencies of where we were able to tighten things up. That's something that we can definitely work with through design development.
And could that be done quickly, like within the next...
I'm gonna tell you, one month is not reasonable. Because they are gonna work through design development. What starts looking at, okay, how are the mechanical systems gonna work? How, those, I think it's more reasonable by the end of summer that we would be able to have that to you.
And who's the appropriate, like, source of councils, what's the appropriate body to be looking at? Is it simply staff or is CCAC involved?
CCAC is definitely involved in this.
What does it involve? So, so can't we, sorry, 'cause I know we're walking into summer season. Can we just cut this a little shorter, maybe two members of CCAC staff and two members of council, and work on crunching things? Because there's a compounding issue here, because we're talking about the aesthetic issues.
Yeah.
Okay. But we're also talking about the big, the big red herring we keep ignoring, and that's the dollar figure. And aesthetics and dollars and the compounding of what the other issues are that we start chopping things down to get down to a workable dollar are also, so it's, you know, we can get to a building size, but we also, parallel to that, should kind of be considering the other things, because we have to give in our budget.
You got the CC, the way we work the CCAC now is they're clear that their focus is on all of those public spaces. And the behind-the-counter space, how much counter do we need to lay out this set of plans three times? Because we've got three people coming to the public counter to get their building permits, and two permanent inspectors working on it, you at least need a counter that's X feet long. And then we've also got the public works counter there now, which we don't have presently. And then we've got the post office and other things. So we're working on those spaces. So there's a lot more to it than just four people getting around the table and slashing and burning square footage. We're gonna need the architect involved. We're gonna need to have people talking about mechanical systems and where the mechanical rooms gotta go and where the storage rooms gotta go. We know what the programming spaces requirements are, but the layout, how that works, that's the architect.
So I want to challenge you guys, and we, this has been our tenet from the very, very, very early days, is to create flexible spaces and shared spaces in this project. That, and, and not having been involved in the floor plan layout, you know, and just recently seeing the floor plan for the first time, really, even with CCC, because all the CCC has been really tasked with is the schematic, the skin of it and the layout, based on the square footages of the programming that had been factored in. But now if you look at the way that the drawings, the floor plans laid out, you can see where there's efficiencies that can be made, you, you just can. And flexible, shared spaces and...
Oh, that's all part of the design development.
That's all part of the design development.
Yeah, that's design development. So what we need to do is get past that and then keep the pressure on the CCAC and the architects and staff, you know, to not, you know, grow it. And, you know, um...
Well, if anything, it's gonna shrink as we go through the design development process. Identify some of those efficiencies and move it along.
That is correct. It's not gonna get bigger. I, I think the direction of what I'm hearing regarding the council chambers is very good to minimize it and use the requirement of the EOC square footage as the driver, as opposed to looking at it as a multi-use space. The multi-use will, will fall out as whatever it's going to be.
And I don't wanna use it as a percentage, you know, reduce it as... Let me interrupt you and have your...
So, so, we have two buildings, and we have the council chambers. And true, it's grown about twenty-eight hundred square feet. The administration council and admin building's grown about twenty-eight hundred square feet. I think the council wants to tell the architects and CCAC that we'll accept this if it goes, if it's cut back twenty-eight hundred square feet. That's not accepting the schematic design. That's telling the architects, redo it.
No.
Just, can I finish?
Okay, sure.
That, that's, that's, I mean, that's a big change. Some change to the council chambers, I think, is fine. And there was a discussion in the CCAC about whether it should be a sixty-person or an eighty-person council chambers. And we went back to, but you're not getting twenty-eight hundred, if you take twenty-eight hundred square feet out of the council chambers, you're not gonna build the council chambers. So there, you could take room out of the library, but that's irrelevant to the costs, because the money that's being raised to pay for this civic center doesn't go to the library. The library money's already there. So it doesn't make any sense to try to change the library program. You're really talking about changing the programming. I mean, if you're talking about taking out twenty-eight hundred square feet, you're talking about changing the programming. Maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, but it feels to me like that's not accepting the...
But so, Rick, I don't think, I, I don't want to put a percentage number that they have to reduce or a square footage number.
But if, my point is, if it's at that, I mean, if it's a couple hundred square feet, maybe take that out of the council chambers and make it a sixty-person chamber and an eighty-person chamber. But if you're, if it's anywhere in the order of magnitude of twenty-eight hundred square feet, and I understand it grew to that since we looked at it in terms of conceptual design, I'm not really clear about how that happened, but it did. But that's, that's a big redo, if you ask me. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, tell me if I'm...
No, you would be going back and revisiting schematic design at that point. I think there has been a lot of work. When architects work with a city and the constituents to come up with a programming element, your, your program is your program. I think the city manager was, put a good item out there of, here's how many square feet you're operating with now. You can walk around, you know it's deficient. The police department, I, I'm fairly certain that, Lieutenant Wade will tell me, that it's not reasonable. So you are gonna have increases in square footage. So if you're just looking at what you have now, which is what, about eighteen thousand square feet?
Eighteen six forty-one.
And you know that's deficient, that to take your twenty thousand and say, I'm gonna take away twenty-eight, means I'm gonna go less than I am now, it, it's not gonna work. So you, you probably aren't far off. There are some efficiencies that can be done. I, I would encourage or challenge the design team to, one, keep things as efficient as possible, make sure that the EOC is designed to the minimum square footage, to be an EOC, not, not focus on the multi-use quite as much.
Or take it, as you mentioned, remove the EOC from the council chambers, shrink it to just the chambers and space, and figure out somewhere else to work the EOC into a training room, region room combination within the PD, and we'll also let's spend you that one point five up charge to the council chambers.
And that reduces, so that reduces the cost of building the council chambers if it's not gonna be an EOC.
The other thing that I would challenge the team with is saying, okay, we love this look and feel. Now that we understand it, please, we're gonna, we're gonna open the door to you to come back to us with alternatives. So it might be that in front of your building, you have the more significant relief elements on the windows, but maybe you go with a little bit more cost-effective window on the other faces of the building that still blend in and still are gonna have the look and feel, but have a cost benefit. And then you deal with bidding adults for some of those more detailed ones. But I would challenge the design team with that, and I believe that's already on their radar. I think they, they do want to know that it's okay to look at some of those elements, where, you know, they do understand the skin and they don't want to feel that they're coming back to you with something that they're gonna get their hands slapped for even considering.
It's not about the value of engineering.
But you're saying things that frankly are gonna be a little offensive to me personally, because we asked for a breakdown, okay, of, yeah, and I know you weren't here, but we're asked to, I'm getting, I'm okay with the schematic, but I have some issues. And I have some issues if I do a reduction for square footage, that we're not gonna approve the schematic design now. We can deal with the programming and square footage issues and the issues you're referring to. That's not what we're supposed to be talking about, but we will. But the approval of that, it'd be a lot easier for me if we were talking about those issues and I could see some costs, and then we could just sit here, you know, I...
Well, that's the sustainability step.
And that's...
Like, that's design development.
But that's not, we're not sharing that. Carrie, we really aren't...
Well, I get it, but you're also, when you, you're, you know, it's very difficult to sit here and talk about square footage when we're actually going to create better utility in the space that we have. So irrelevant of what is here, if we make more efficient space, if I had eighteen thousand square foot space before and I get you back to eighteen thousand more efficient, it could look and feel like twenty thousand square feet, hence the reduction. Do you see what I mean? So...
I don't think you're gonna get there. It's not gonna have to be specs for what is going to be in the building. The number of people and things like that were different than what we have today that are in the book that we're looking at. And so that is, that needs to be cleaned up.
That's incorrect, that's absolutely incorrect. The original spec that was simply the architect, had our current staffing and staffing load requirements. The air-to-glass architect added that future lieutenant office. That's not on the current set of plans. It's a workroom, it was always meant to be a workroom, not a future lieutenant, there's no additional staff.
I just think, the, the, the size is too large. In my view, from looking at the plans, the, the, the cost is even more of an issue, and, and I've got issues with the library, and we're gonna put those off and put those off and put those off. We're just kicking the can down the road. I do think sooner or later, we're gonna have to talk about, you know, how the library's gonna be built, are the windows gonna be open or not, you know, how can you have a quiet room with trains next door? You know, how big is the facility gonna be? How big should the library be or the, the lobby be? So, so those things do drive the cost. And if we wanna kick the can down the road, that's fine, but I, I'll tell you this, I don't... But I, I'll tell you this, I don't see how you can approve a footprint and a layout and, and, and tell the architect, fine, but we're gonna continue to work it, we're not approving it. I mean, that's the thing.
So can, can I respond to you about the library?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I, I, I think that one of the things you need to understand is that the San Mateo County Library Representative and the San Mateo County Library JPA Board has been very involved with the, um, the process, uh, attending almost every meeting. Uh, and so they are, they have been very involved with not only the, um, you know, approving the design and loving the design and the look and feel, understanding the site that it's gonna be on, and even the interiors. And there's, I, from the CCAC committee, there is a library ad hoc committee, which DeGoy is on. And so that, I mean, that's not something that we, and since it's being paid for by the library donor funds, then, and, and since the JPA and the library representative is happy with, I don't think we need to really, uh, worry about that.
Well, then don't label it quiet room, because it won't be.
Okay, well, that.
Okay, can I say something?
Yes, sir, I was hoping you would chime in.
I, I think that there are two very different things. There may be some comments regarding the particular library structure and, and all of that, and I think that's perfectly fine to provide and, and have a forum for it, uh, and we should do that. Uh, it, it seems to me though that the predominant comments around the table tonight are, have to do with the cost and the cost increase. So I'd like to address that. The, the cost in, and the cost increase has something to do with the square footage increase. And I'm really not talking about any cost increase related to the library because in terms of, I, I take it that the concern about the cost increase is a need to fund that cost. Well, in fact, the funding need in this report, in this proposal, goes down by a half a million dollars from what it was when we approved it at the conceptual stage. Now, that does include a proposal from staff to, uh, increase some building fee-related issues because the building portion has increased. So there's a cost that exceeds the, uh, the, uh, reserved amount that we have in the building fund. And staff's proposing that we address that cost by raising some money for the surcharge, which is a separate issue that we should address. But in terms of the fundraising itself, this proposal is to reduce it by a half a million dollars. Now, I mean, and it, I think that if we were to shrink the size of the council chambers or any other portion of the police or admin building, that would shrink that fundraising cost by more, which is good. I mean, the more we can shrink the fundraising cost, the better. But I just want to be clear that although the overall cost has increased, those cost allocations, if I understand it right, are really between the library fund, the library's portion because its square footage has increased as a result of taking on this building, and the building department's increased cost because its portion is now larger than it had been. Uh, the fundraising cost has less.
And I'll just tag on to that, uh, the way that it's increasing building fees to raise that additional money is not a new thing. It was done previously back in the early nineties, uh, in order to get the building department out of the trailer. And that's why we have the two point one million in the building department fund, uh, to pay for the building department. So, uh, it, it just happens, it, it just costs more. So if we, maybe if we reduce the overall size of the, uh, building departments, you know, the building and their percentage of the total building, maybe that money would be reduced a little bit also, and we wouldn't have to give a reason.
And the lobby too.
And, yeah.
So, I have a question, maybe some lobby part, some of these sixteen hundred and sixty-five square feet?
Yeah, but, but the lobby is supposed to also be a working lobby, it's not just a, an open free lobby because that's where the cameras are, are going to be. So, so that was the, that was the.
That is correct.
That was the, that was the desire, that was the goal. It's a little problematic with the way the lobby ended up being.
The lobby, the lobby is your mail.
Some of the add-ons are, uh, are they, like the photovoltaics, that's a big cost, is, is that included in this cost estimate?
PD is in there, I believe, right?
That's my understanding right now.
So, so there's a, well, there's a, I mean, you know, we're part, we're part of this, uh, grant, uh, with, with this CEC
Eight hundred thousand?
Where it could further reduce, if it's in there, it could further reduce our fundraising cost by eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So, uh, you know, we still have a significant amount of money to raise, there's no question about it.
And I think, but I'm.
This is less than we expected to have to raise at the time we did the conceptual.
Rick, I, I think the comments are, first off, it's a very attractive goal, okay? And, 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 you know, we are making progress, albeit slow on the fundraising, but we wanna make sure that the community sees us, that we're doing a conservative job and we're, but we're do, doing something nice but conservative, uh, and that they don't feel that they're gonna be contributing to something that's gonna be, um, more brandyous than perhaps they would, you know, that send the wrong message. And so I, I do think that we need to be sensitive on that and some of the stuff that we're doing. And I think that we, we should be scrutinizing, you know, the cons, the, the, the requirements and, 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 and also all the elements that were in there and even placement to where those elements are because, you know, you might have to shore up a second floor, to put a gym on the second floor as opposed to leaving it on the first floor to some, some, some period of meaning thing, so. So all I'm saying is this, is that we need to be cost-conscious, we need to, uh, and, and I do think, since the fundraising, that's why I mentioned the month, okay? The fundraising's going on now, and, and I do think as fast as we can get this thing done, not be conservative, but we need to do a good job and put some pressure on them to go as fast as we can because people wanna see it and they wanna see the outline of the building and the, and the inside, and.
So, just one more comment, I, I think one of the, if I understood from WRNS, one of the significant cost increases is the decision to make the roof not a metal roof, but to make it a tile roof, that's, that's expensive.
A portion of it, a portion of it.
A, a pretty good, yeah, right, where there aren't photovoltaics, it's, it's tile. I mean, I don't know, I don't know how much, I mean, maybe that should be an add-on, but I don't know how much.
See, that's getting into the value engineering, that's not where we are today, you know, because approving, approving the schematic design doesn't say we have absolutely approved.
It's a little completely outside, but yes.
I think we're supposed to have a white roof.
But, but, does that say that we absolutely are committing to a tile roof?
No, there's probably alternates we could do for that.
There are alternates, and, and either these are, these is, it does change the look and the feel. Um, but those are definitely something that the architect, uh, during the design development, we come back and say, you could, you could see a cost savings with this and they could give an image of what that would be, and you can make that decision.
So what I would like to do, I mean, did you have more to say?
I didn't have enough to say, but I do.
I, I have, I have a comment, before we change the, the, the direction.
We're not changing, we're changing.
We're, we're talking about going really fast to get a lot of information to adjust a fundraising target from twenty-six point three, no, I'm sorry, I'm going to use your, your commentary from earlier, from twenty-six point three to maybe twenty-four, and that's not gonna make a whole bunch, bunch of difference in the next bump and a half. I think we really need to get it right, and if we speed through it, that's not gonna happen.
So I, I.
I think six months is too long.
So, I, I agree, um, but I, I mean, simply I think that there could be some reductions to get consistent with the square footage that we have. Uh, deal with the issues related to that, I think that that's a reasonable, I'm not talking about any of that, the other issues, but deal with those square footage issues, and I think those are reasonable accommodations to try to say, the town's not growing, we're not asking for any more. We've reduced it because it is a big council chamber, I mean, you know, most of the time we only have twenty-five to fifty people in, but with that.
It depends.
Or, or two.
But, but, okay, we get, we get, we, we get fifty seats, but it's a reasonable area to get a reduction. We do need to send a signal that we are being responsible, that we're really considering these things. We do have a budget to consider and we're just going to refine it a little bit. And so I think approving the schematic design at this point is inappropriate, but really putting the hammer down to really have staff work with the CCAC and, you know, crunch it a little bit, and then we'll talk about the other issues related to that.
Okay, you have a comment?
Yeah, it's, I, a little bit process oriented, but it, um, when, when the cost of the, of the administration building goes up, whatever it was, is it, how, whatever amount that, that building went up, um, I see a number and then six months later we get a new number, right, that comes up. So it's kind of, I'd love as we move forward to have the council be more directly involved in these things because we are weighing, you know, dollars versus what we're designing at this point. Right now, I don't feel comfortable that anybody's really making those trade-offs. And I was, I'd like to see us play a more direct role in that process.
This is the first, uh, real cost estimate that we've really gotten based on the, you know, the, the, the development side. Uh, I just wanna, um, so it, it just escaped me, but, um.
Say something, this must excuse me. So, I, I.
Oh, I know.
I think we should, I mean, if we don't approve this now, and that means a three-month delay, be aware that our cost estimator told us it costs us eighty thousand dollars a month every month we delay. Part of the reason, uh, it's not the entire reason we've got this, this increase, there was some square footage increase. Uh, there were some design issues that I think go to aesthetic, they're, they're, the aesthetics of the building have changed. It's a much more attractive building now and, than it was before, and that includes having moved the council chambers where it was when we looked at it at conceptual, to where it is now. I think it's more attractive, I think it's a good decision, it added costs. To, to make this building look the way that it's designed now, and I think the quality's better, it's adding costs. But there's also some delays that are adding costs as, as we add on months, and I don't remember what we are, six months behind where we were.
Yeah, you're pretty much.
It adds on costs, so if we're gonna delay it here by, by another, and, and I just wanna be open, I think, you know, this is a round act issue. Let's, let, we're discussing it openly, I think it's a really good thing.
Absolutely.
Uh, if, if we're gonna delay it three months, it's gonna, that's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost addition.
Well, and the other point is, at this point, we are out of contract with WRNS.
That's correct, the council made a conscious choice to only approve the contract phase five phase.
Yeah, so unless we approve this schematic, you know, and go into the design development, which in its essence develops the design more accurately to answer all the questions that you have on a real-time basis and take the input that you have on a real-time basis and the design that, you know, we won't, we won't move forward.
But will they be designing, I realize it's an internal thing, but will they be designing when they're doing the detailed design, designing the dual, for example, in the library, the dual plumbing systems?
So, this is not, this is not development of construction documents.
It's not, yeah, right.
What you're talking about is a development of construction documents, that's after design development. The schematic design, you have the image of what it looks like. I, I think I've heard from all of you that you like the look of the building.
Can we add, can we approve it with the addition, additional instructions, you know, taking in all of our input? That we do want it to be valued engineered at this point, you know, going forward, uh, you know, without losing the look and feel that we like, um, but.
Well, I, I actually totally agree with that, and I wanna get closer to Carrie's issue as well. Eighteen thousand, six hundred and forty-one is our current space, get as close to that as we possibly can.
Yes.
In that square footage of the new building.
In a more efficient way.
In a more functional way. More functional, but you've gotta understand, you've got a police department, that if you're building a new, if you built that police department today, it's gonna have a lot more stuff in it by law.
Sure.
That it has to happen in it. We can't have a singular bathroom changing station for sure.
Yeah.
We can't have locker rooms in the middle of our briefing room, we, you just can't do that. You need to have secure interview rooms, you know, it's just totally different.
I agree.
So we'll, we have to do that, but that's gonna add some square footage.
So if you can get me there with that comment, and I, I approve a schematic design on that condition that we get down to the square footage issue.
As close as we can get.
Just grind it down to it.
For the best.
I feel a little more comfortable with that if that's agreeable to the architect and saying, hey, okay, we can move forward. There's gonna be some mon, minor modifications, not huge, we're not moving a council chamber, we may be reducing a size, we may be moving a wall in. We're gonna consider some things, 'cause I kinda feel like there's a little strong arm, I mean, why are, why are, why are three of us here? I mean, nothing against the two that are on, right, but you're a little bit more involved.
True.
Well, and on top of that, I don't believe you guys were even exposed, or frankly, the CCA was, see, was exposed to the floor plan. So we're kinda being a little strong-armed on approving something if we're talking about any layout.
But, but we are not approving interior layouts.
But we didn't, but we don't know what the size of the council chamber is, and we don't know how many seats are.
No, we are.
There's the program.
It, but that was for program, we are not approving any kind of interior, but we have in the past, the programming has come before council many times, many times.
But it's been modified, changed.
No, 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 the, the overall programming has been part of the master plan, when we did the master plan scenario and in the beginning with the WRNS, so.
What we're talking about is the gross-up space, the hallways, the counter rooms, the corridors.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, the, so, so we are not, I wanna be really clear, we are not approving the floor plans and the, the interior layouts.
No. I never said we would.
But that, but that affects the outside, is, that's all we're saying.
That's all I'm saying.
And so, I mean, we really would like them to do it, it, to the maximum extent possible. When you have a budget, you do a design to cost, and we're not doing that, we're doing a design to design. And that's why the budget sometimes goes awry, so there needs to be a cost element in there that's conveyed to them, that we're, what, what our cost target was and still is, is my, in my mind, so.
That's a fundraising target, not a budget.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's a number I've always been thinking of, okay, so, so that's where we are as far as I'm concerned, that's, you know, so.
So, I'd like to go.
You're very good.
Yes.
I, I do think that we need to make them aware that we're cost-conscious as well, as well as our constituents are cost-conscious and they wanna make sure that we're good stewards of the money and spending it properly. So I do think there needs to be some.
Privately funded.
That's okay, but, you know, it is provided that we have more than one million dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, and you can, you can say privately fund it and we're gonna build it next year and we may or may not have all the money.
Yeah.
Okay?
I would like to make a motion.
So, I, I'd like to make one as well.
Well, do it, maybe we'll do it in sync.
No, I'm gonna make the motion.
I would just like to say, in, in a form of a motion, that we approve the schematic design with the condition that we have, what George said, to drill down a bit, give the architects some, uh, you know, direction.
Get as close as we can to that.
Close as we can to get to that number, and maybe it's some bulk, but it feels like something to me. Um, and work with the CCAC and whatever needs have to, to get us to that point, to hopefully not, give us a timeframe as well. So, um, I think that, you know, with that, I could say I could approve that.
Fair enough.
I just would like to.
If I could add to that.
Hacksing is not, it's called a picture, it's not, it's not.
No, no discussion, then tell her a second.
If I could add to your motion, like, in some way it moves the reporting, we come back, we're less than a great response, but we come back monthly.
I, 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 I think that that's very important, I think we come back to you monthly, and it'll be there is staff or the architect.
So you have a motion with an amendment by Vice Mayor Lunters, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Councilmember DeGoy, do we have any further discussion?
I, I actually do have further discussion. George, you said that if the EOC were moved out of the council chambers, that could reduce the cost by one point five million dollars, a rough number.
No, it, no, it's, uh, the, uh, police department and emergency operations center now to be built to building code standards.
I understand, I understand.
But it's lots of grants that it's.
No, no, I understand, but if the EOC were not included in the council chambers, which I think the current design has.
Yes.
If it were able to be included in, for example, the police training room, which is going to be built to the standard that the police facility has to fulfill, if that enabled us to build the council chambers to the lower non-safety level standard, there's obviously a dollar savings associated with that.
There is, now, the architect originally, I think, actually came to this being or a CCAC being, not this being CCAC being, and talked about the fact that if the walls are together.
Adjoined.
Adjoined, then, then it's gonna end up replicating all the way through, but there might be a way to. might be a way to do a joint separation between the two to allow them to be built.
So, I don't think that, I don't think that has-
So, my amendment to the motion is that they should look at if they can move the EOC, because that will reduce by some significant dollar amount, I think. And also, I mean, if, if we really wanna get to the lowest dollar we can in fundraising, we should take out the photovoltaics. It's eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and it's an add-on, so let's take it out of the money.
Well, we said we were gonna plumb it. We said we were gonna plumb it, and then maybe somebody wants to donate.
Right.
And that's the thing.
Well, I understand.
So, we should, I, it wasn't a million dollars to plumb the, the BV, it was that a million dollars in the cost estimate was for doing the panels.
Yeah.
So, I think-
And we've got, we've got a grant application-
Yeah.
-that we may be able to get that money for.
Okay, so-
And we may have people who wanna donate it, it's true.
So, I have a, I have a motion and a second with an amendment, a, um, and a motion and an amendment to your first motion, and then a second with a comment about removing the photovoltaic, the photo, and, and removing the EOC from the council chambers.
I think that's good, that's, I could agree to the amendment of the EOC. I think the photovoltaic, just, for clarity, just, yeah, George, is not, that's not within the conceptual design. We can, and we can take care of that for after that.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Turn that off, turn that off.
I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposeds? Any abstentions? Motion hearing, unanimous. Thank you for the lively debate, because we'll go on to item number B of item fourteen, which is to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number three for design development, the WRNS studio, giving amount of seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty-five, pending receipt of a contribution of five hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars from Hatherton now. So, in order to move this along, this is a contract amount for WRNS, and then the contribution. Do I have any discussion from council? I'm gonna hold it up for public comment afterward.
Exactly. I think we've discussed the substance of this issue in, in the prior discussion. I'd like to make a motion to-
Here. We've gotta have discussion and public comment. I'll, I'll come back to that. Any other council members?
I'm looking to see where it was presented. Was it presented in materials, or this items aren't really laid out, so I-
No, I'm talking to the recommendations.
I see that there's a, there's a, a sentence recommending authorizing five hundred and six thousand dollars, and, and I think there's no discussion of it anywhere in the chart.
There's, there's, no, it was presented, the scope of work for the architect, the scope, the full scope of work for all phases for the architect was reviewed by the council at its original meeting when you hired WRNS. The costs haven't changed. It's just each phase is independently authorized.
Well, what, what's the, what are the deliverables and the dates associated with those? If you could refresh our memory.
The date, the dates, the dates will work out, they're scheduled in there.
Well, look at the schedule, it would be the design development cost and everything, and it's in their original contract bid. Okay, I'm going to open the floor for any public comment.
I have comments about process. No comments about the amount, the amounts we've all seen before, and Atchison now will write a check by the end of the week, and we'll, we'll fund our part if that's what you decide to do. My comment has to do with process, and I'm sitting here listening to a, a, a conversation about, the council wants to see more, they want information from the CCAC and staff, and quite honestly, CCAC has been cut out of a lot of the discussions about square foot and budget, and my reaction is, this is what you guys were all responding to. I think that that needs to be reconsidered, and I think George needs to work a little bit more collaboratively with the CCAC to make the recommendations to you all with what to look at, not to make a decision there to say, we don't want a council chamber there. That's not our decision. But our decision could be, look at X and Y, and here are the costs as we go along this, because we're now designing a building where people there sit there, look at each other and go, we're not allowed to talk about what it costs. Well, we're not allowed to talk about the square foot, feet. It's a problem. So, I hope you guys will figure out this process and re-invite members of the CCAC to discuss some of these issues in preparing the reports monthly for the council. And the other thing I'd like to say is, nobody's seen these floor plans, so, if they've been sitting around, I don't know, you know, where they've been, but I think there should be some opening up of the floor plans so that people can talk to different people and make suggestions. There are other ideas going around, we ought to collect them all.
Exactly.
All right, so, we need to see the floor plan.
Any other public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to council, and I will open it up for a motion.
Well, I have a question.
Oh, certainly.
Is this, is this funding going to incorporate, pay for the changes we just talked about, the revamping, or is that something extra to get the equipment on top of in addition?
I think the things that we've talked about can be incorporated into the design development as long as you're not looking at coming back and revisiting what the outside look is going to be.
Not the look, the size may shrink if we-
The size, but I-
Construction drawings haven't been made.
Yeah, this, this is not construction drawings. This is, if we are looking at saying a wholesale change, for example, of, well, let's move the whole council chamber to another part, then we're going back and revisiting schematic design. That's not what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is fine-tuning spaces, and we will, we will fine-tune it and maximize it and look at the program and make sure we're fine-tuning as much as we can.
And they know that the lobby is problematic, you know, already, you know, that, that needs to be worked on.
There, there, yes. There's, there's, there are things that just need to be-
Yes, yeah.
-made more efficient.
No, I mean, my only concern is, is just an internal council staff concern of, we're asking private a thousand dollars, I'd like that more support, just so I know exactly what we're buying.
Actually, we're spending seven hundred and sixty-seven.
Seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
And it's in the original contract with WRNS that lays out all of that.
I, I got you. I don't memorize. None of us memorize.
Well, you would have liked to do one more.
I would like to see more than a sentence that said we need this much money, that said here, why we need this money, and here we're getting for it.
That there, I think that's fair.
It's, it's more than fair. I'll put on the record that in the future, there will come a time when somebody puts down, says we need a million dollars for X. I may as well, no, 'cause I need support, and that's my effort, and I feel bad, so, let's put it in.
Anyone else?
No, I've been.
Okay.
I, I do have the, we're gonna ask what the deliverables were for this particular phase. I can read them off if you'd like.
Would you like to hear what that is?
Yeah, I should respond to councilman, with his question, you're reminding me what I think.
That actually tells you what you're paying for.
Doesn't.
Thank you for wanting to hear that. He wasn't offering.
All right, so the architectural documentation for this phase will include further developed schematic design documents, such as a site plan, floor plans, reflected ceiling plan, a roof plan, building sections, exterior elevations, interior elevations, draft, finished door and window schedules, representative wall sections, prototypical details, such as some of the things already included in this hundred and forty-four page document, draft specifications, and interior material samples packages. There will be a couple of presentations, and then they will further develop civil engineering drawings, site drainage, site grading, utility plans, parking lot grading, drainage plan details, landscape details, planting and hardscape plans, irrigation layouts, structural engineering drawings, foundation plans, mechanical engineering drawings, HVAC, electrical engineering, power plans, lighting plans, site signal and alarm plans, furniture fixtures and equipment schedules, graphics, model by outline, preliminary engineering models, and sustainability analysis. That's the deliverable for the design development phase.
Well, yeah, George, I, I would, I would thank that, it's just me, but for them to be able to do all those things that you listed, for, for us not knowing whether or not we're putting radiant heat tiles up in the ceiling that have all this extra plumbing and lots of copper up there, or we're putting two plumbing systems in there that can't do all that. So, I think that there's some basic things that need to be done, yeah, and so, you know, again, as I mentioned earlier, it's not gonna be repetitive. We need to get those analyses done early before, so not to hold them up.
If you look at this, there are, there are decisions.
These are the deliverables at the end of the design development phase?
There are deliverables.
That work is part of design development.
Right, and there, there are deliverables, deliverables and dates, and, you know, coordination meetings, and, you know, background meetings, and this, and if this needs to be, this is what MAC five has put together for us. Mary Grace says this is going to expand to six months, you know, so, you know, there's gonna be lots of time and opportunity to weigh in and evaluate as it goes forward.
And one of the reasons that, you know, and Mary Grace mentioned it to the architect today, and Gordon reiterated it in an email as well, is we're getting information, the CCA is getting information from the architect as this project goes along in real time, but it's, it's, they give the information in their reports on a Friday. We have that meeting, it goes to this council meeting the following week. We've got a chance to review it for four or five days. We need more time to get it right. We need more time to vet it, look at it, send it back to the architect, say, hey, this is wrong, you need additional information, the council needs this additional information, or we're not gonna be able to get it to you. That's why the phase is getting longer. Our process here is longer.
Would it be possible, would the council be willing to hold a periodic special meeting specifically to review the plans?
Maybe a joint meeting with the CCAC.
Okay, I mean, I'm just, I know how much you want to be, but I'm just-
Maybe we could gun out one of the other.
They would, might I suggest that it, it be incorporated either with the CCAC or at your regular council. It's lovely to say, oh, let's do this, but the reality is, the consultant needs time to put the plans together. The consultant needs time to do their quality control check. It needs to come to staff so we do what's called quality assurance to make sure what was said in these various meetings was actually incorporated in the documents. We give them their comments back so that it can be properly presented to you all. I, I really would encourage you to support that so that when things come to you, they are more complete. They are, they are answering a lot of the questions you're asking. I, I'm hearing what you're saying, and I really support that staff comes back every month with an update, and that we bring the architect in a couple times during this time. We're working with the architect right now on, as I mentioned, revamping the schedule so that it can be discussed with the CCAC at their June sixth meeting, and then my plan was to bring that to you in June with, okay, here's what we accomplished this last month, here's what we're looking at, here's where we're looking at our milestones, decisions, and addressing. I'm absorbing what you're all saying of how to program these things into these early phases so that we can get back to you so you can have those assurances moving forward.
Perhaps your special meeting can be in advance of our regular council meeting at five thirty. We have a joint meeting with the CCAC from five thirty to seven, and then you have your regular council meeting.
Sounds good.
So, so one of the things that I don't see in here, though, 'cause we keep saying, yeah, you're gonna get that, and that's in here. I don't, I don't see, in December, I believe it was, it might have been November, you guys gave us a list of, here's the sustainability stuff for you, and we said, yeah, we'd like to know, we'll, we'll give you our decision on it. And you even had months of when we had to make those decisions. Nowhere in this list of things do I see, we're seeing the internal rate, the IRR on, on these net zero and sustainability stuff. So, personally, I'd like to know when we're gonna see that.
We realized that that was clearly part of design development. We weren't there yet. We were rushing the schedule, and getting to you wasn't gonna get you the information you needed.
I think what he's saying, it's not listed in this schedule of events at MAC five as on, as a line item.
No, it's part of the scope, yeah.
Yeah, but it's part of the scope that he highlighted that is, so it may not be in this, these date considerations, but it's certainly in the deliverables in the contract.
Well, I, I just don't see it, because if you can't do the detailed design without knowing if it's in or out in many of these cases.
And I'm gonna make sure that we understand. This is not detailed design we're in. It's design development. The detailed design and construction documents are the next phase. So, even the list that the city manager has read about all these various plans, those are gonna come to you as line drawings, as schematic of how to lay it out, and they're gonna be the guide for the team to develop the construction documents. You will not be able to build this building with the plans that are developed through design development. This is the next thought process. This is the thought process to say, okay, have we planned ventilation shafts so that it'll work appropriately? Have we laid out how many different HVAC units will we need, that type of thing? We have, that will all come together. If I had to guess, I would guess by the end of the summer, in August, possibly the meeting in July, we'll be looking at some of these issues.
So, I think that you can take that as a message, we're gonna complain until we actually get to the value time to actually make it into, so we get it, we're, we're just gonna complain, so. We want it, we want it, so we know when that process starts, that we know excuses we haven't asked for, 'cause Bill's gonna say, I know I asked for it five hundred times, so just expect it.
No problem.
One of the frustrations we've been having, staff, is there's a lot of rush to this project, and get that, but we're making mistakes along the way. We don't wanna do that.
So, in the same, it feels like it's not moving fast enough, so there's a rush and push, and there's a lot of factors coming together.
Well, we're trying to slow it down.
Okay.
We really are.
So, I'd like to call for a motion for item B. Yes, for-
I'll move that we authorize the city manager to execute an amendment for the design development with WRNS studio in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Pending receipt, which we-
Yeah, pending receipt of contribution from now to now that they're supporting.
So, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Beast. And is there any further discussion? Are there any nays? Oh, all favor, right? Any nays? Any abstentions? So, I think we have a motion that passed unanimously. I knew when I said that it's wrong. So, okay, we'll go to item number C, that we are going to accept the cost estimate or direct the CCAC to work with WRNS studio and staff to make design changes consistent with council direction. I'm going to, so, I, so, well, my comment is, we've talked about this at great length. Does any other council member want to make a comment or a question?
I'm mostly down there.
We, we've talked around the issue of this, it was called budget, it's called fundraising target, it's called, whatever you wanna call it, twenty to twenty-five million that came up, and we were way back in twenty fourteen as part of the master plan. That was the fundraising target. And we've also talked around the issue of, we really don't have a budget for this project. So, if you wanna set a budget for this project, now would be the time to say, that fundraising target can't be any higher than X. That's our max.
Okay. Can I open it up for public comment?
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any member of the public want to make a comment about item number C, which is accepting the cost estimate, or for us to direct the CCAC to work with WRNS studio and staff to make design changes consistent with council direction, which we have just been giving at great length. You want to? Yes?
May I?
Yes, please.
Um, we've watched two cost estimates come in, and in both cases, the numbers have risen. I, I don't wanna address why, but they've, they've risen. I would, I, I would like to see us go back to what would be a basic cost number, which we really haven't ever heard. There have been discussions on what I consider basic numbers, what you might consider a basic number, what you might, around twenty-five million dollars. That didn't include some of the upgrades, but I'd, I'd like a basic number that everybody can say, here's our basic building, and what, above that are things that if we get there, we get there. And I'd like to, I don't know how to encourage you to do that. I don't know who's gonna get us there with that number, but I, I think the community is, in some cases, struggling with the fact that every time numbers come out, the space gets bigger, the numbers get bigger, and I even heard one person say to me, well, the way it's going, people are gonna bid on this and figure they can make it even bigger. And that, I don't think that's the intent. I think the council doesn't want that to be a story, and I think the storyline is responsibility, and here's the number, and we're working to get back there. So, I would hope that that's what you guys might do.
So, thank you very much. My comment about that is, it would be great if, if we were all cost estimate professionals and we could say, you know, for the size of the building, it's gonna cost twenty-five million, thirty million, and that's the target. I think that we really need to rely on- I think that we really need to rely on our professionals, our consultants, to maybe come up with a, a base price, maybe without all the other add alternates. That would just be not playing vanilla, because I don't think Apatin wants playing vanilla, but I think that a reasonable without, you know, over the top finishes and because it's all a matter of, you know, finishes. And so maybe the twenty-five million is the right target, it kinda sounds right, but I don't know for sure that that is a reasonable target. That's just my opinion, sorry.
I think, Madam Mayor, you're speaking twenty-five million in terms of the fundraising target.
Fundraising, yes.
DeeDee's talking about basic building costs, which twenty-five million is gonna be a fundraising target, twelve or fifteen. So they're two different animals, like we're talking about.
No, George, to be, I'm not talking about essentially not talking about the library.
Right.
Okay, then the, the library's paid for, I don't, I think that that's, that's not even a discussion point.
Yeah.
So I'm not looking for twelve, I mean, whatever the fundraising goal is, I want the basic project. If the project, including the road improvements, is twenty-five, great, if it's twenty-eight, great, but let's solve the number, let's kind of get it there because there is a confusion.
I think, I, I think we could, I mean, today, the way we've done this is we've hired really good professionals to come in with a, a design process that they've been providing. And they've been struggling through just that, everybody's struggled with this project, and we don't have the money to build it, it's, it's a hard thing. But, and they wanna balance quality with efficiency. And the way we've been doing it today is, they do the design, then we have our project manager, who we have hired, do a cost estimate on that, and that cost amount changes. And there's frustration that everyone feels with that. We could do it a different way, we could say, we're gonna only raise twenty-five million dollars or twenty-six million dollars, whatever it is, basically DeeDee just said this, but we could approach this in a different way. And we could say, we're gonna raise twenty-five million dollars, and if this building comes in to cost more than that, we're gonna cut things out, you know? We're, we're not gonna do, we're gonna do a, a metal roof if we have to, or we're not gonna do the landscaping, or we're, there's one thing or another we could choose not to do if it comes in more. And if we raise the twenty-five million dollars and somebody wants to do a different roof, then you gotta do a redesign, there's added costs, they couldn't pay for that to do it. I'm just saying there's a different way we could approach it, and, and it might be a better message to the community if we just set a number and says, this is the number. And, and let, let the designers figure out what gets cut out. There, there will, and so, there's gonna be options put on that, but.
Yeah.
You, you wanna get, they'll give you options, Rick, you don't wanna have a designer do it, but I think, personally, we've been saying a lot of twenty-five million dollars and we've been saying it for a while, I think that we should say, that's our number. And, and, and that's it, and then from there, they'll come back and we can have alternatives and people will fund something, but I think twenty-five million, I can see my way to twenty-five million, I can't see my way to much more than that.
I think by doing that, you're actually setting the budget for the project for the first time ever.
But how do you know that that's a realistic budget?
No, that's the fundraising target, the budget for the project overall, fundraising target.
That's just a fundraising target, but ju- just to respond to that, I mean, going through the staff report, right now, the, the, the latest cost estimate from MAC five is that the amount of money, the fundraising target that we have to achieve the number is twenty-seven point three million, right?
Twenty-six, four.
Or no, sorry, twenty-six point eight million, reduced from the twenty-seven point three million that we had in October. And we could say, but that twenty-six point eight includes eight hundred thousand dollars for votational tax, I don't know what other.
Two point nine million dollars in contingencies.
There's a lot of contingencies.
Yeah, two, two point nine million dollars in contingencies. I think we can say, we're gonna set the fundraising target at twenty-five million, what, and then all of us have a responsibility to figure out what it is we're gonna build within that budget. I think that's perfectly reasonable and responsible.
Let Mary Grace say something.
So, a few things, the process you've been going through to date and why it has changed as much as it has is because you've had to come to a point where you have a image of this facility, that's what you want.
Right, exactly.
This is probably your first real, realistic budget. This is something that, yes, we can do some fine tuning from here, are you gonna see massive reductions in it? No. But you can see some fine tuning. If you are going to be looking at setting a goal that is significantly below what's presented to you tonight, I think you need to be prepared for some pretty, pretty strong options, like, well, the council chamber could be an out alternate. It's extreme, but there's, there's certain elements, you're not going to be able to say, well, you know, let's just cut this little bit out or what have you. Your cost effectiveness, if you, if, of how the building is laid out, the skin of the building and what have you, your square footage that you take out in the middle is not going to take out noodles and noodles of, of cost at this point. Landscaping is one that's a, a big unknown right now, there's real opportunities in landscaping to make a more cost effective landscaping, and you can also include lots of alternatives for add alternates. That's a great one, to say, okay, well, we want this more enhanced outdoor room, and we bid that as an add alternate, if it comes in, you go for it, otherwise you have a more simplified element. But you, you are at a point now where you know what you want it to look like, you have something that the design team can hold and work to, and you have what I would say in front of you is the first kind of real budget, so.
So, I, I, I agree with Rick, I think that we will set a tone, I'm creating that twenty-five million dollar mark, and I think that it will be helpful for all parties to know where we are and move on from there. And I'd like to make that as a formal motion and say.
So in, in the formal motion though, we'll be accepting the cost estimate with the caveat that the fundraising target be no higher than twenty-five million dollars.
Correct.
And what are we doing about?
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, who wanted to make that.
I was just thinking that, that, um, I see DeeDee sitting out there, and I actually would love to hear her thoughts or input before we, we nail this down, we'll do something like that. I'll just give you the opportunity.
She's gonna be very happy, I guarantee it.
It's nine o'clock, I have a meeting, gentlemen. I'm running low on energy.
Just like the little committee.
No, no, thank you. I hear the fundraising target, and I've seen some, um, attempts to increase fees or move around other costs. I don't mind reducing, I mean, I, I'm, I'm concerned about grants until we see them. I'm concerned about fees going up until that actually happens and the council does it and there's not a pushback from some part of the community. So those kind of things, I appreciate the work being done to try to, to format those things, but in my mind, having sat in your seats, until it happens, I don't count on it. So twenty-five million dollars to me sounds reasonable, it, I think is a message that I would hope that we can bring to the community and say, there's some attempts with this in the next phase to do some value engineering, to look at reduction in square footage, to look at, um, materials that will be coming to us, and, and having the council say, let's try X, if we get to Y, Y is gonna work fine, being at roofs or landscaping or, you know, whatever the multiple, lot of possibilities will be. Again, I'm gonna put a plug in for the CCAC to be able to work on some of those numbers and ask the questions to make sure you get them back and you get to hear them. Because we're not hearing them, we're not seeing the documents, and I think all of that needs to be enhanced if we're gonna get there, so people can, everybody can carry the message. The project is being done by everybody to present the council with the best information available. So we get a great project that we think people want and we can afford. Donors are funded.
Good, one tweak that I can consider is instead of saying the twenty-five million dollars is the goal, say twenty-five million dollars is an assumption.
An assumption.
We are, we are assuming they're receiving twenty-five million dollars and that's, that's, that's my, so the goal is gonna tell you, that's what you're shooting for, you may or may not get it, that's fine.
Well, can we also amend it to do the direction as was just asked and also was actually labeled in here, that we want the CCAC to work with staff and WRNS to make the design changes and to do the value engineering to come in at, at a twenty-five million dollar level, is what we're hoping to do.
I will agree to those two amendments.
Twenty-five million dollars for the fundraising portion, because there's other funds.
Right, so what I'm hearing is, we're, we've got a motion to set a fundraising target assumption? What's the difference between target or assumption?
Why did that, that, well?
To build a, build a cost estimate that includes an assumption of a twenty-five million dollar fundraising.
It, it really accepts the cost estimate at a one point eight million dollar reduction from what it came in at, if I understand it, because the, the, the cost estimate come, came in saying we needed to raise twenty-six point eight million dollars.
Correct.
And we're saying, we wanna assume that we will receive twenty-five million dollars, so it's informing the architects and our project manager to reduce the project by one point eight million dollars.
To find alternatives.
Correct. And some of that's in alternatives that are, are included in this, and some of it's contingencies, so it may be within the realm of manageable.
Well, okay, so you, you know, but you, you're, you put it in perspective, you know, the reduction of the one point eight, but, you know, I think that the motion and then.
Didn't change the money.
It's been suggested.
So what we're putting out here is a twenty-five million dollar fundraising, uh, target, goal, uh, maximum, right?
No, I'm saying, we actually hit that, that we assume, the purpose of this, we assume we hit twenty-five, that twenty-five million dollars is right. It's not, it's not ceiling, it's not a target, it's an assumption, but that's, that's in.
And we asked the, the teams to, to work.
To the engineer towards that and to have the CCAC to work with WRNS and staff to make that happen, which includes looking at everything. You know, the landscaping, the environmental, the floor plan, the, you know, uh, finishes.
I, I'm gonna caution one thing here, because if, you really have to be careful not to go backwards into schematic design. So, um, those fine tuning, like I mentioned earlier, on square footage and what have you, will be honing in, looking at the option of the EOC being located somewhere else, coming in with a smaller council chamber. But, um, if, if we have too much design by committee, we're not gonna make it.
Well, we wanna have a subset, we should have a subset of the CCAC.
So the scope of work change on the committees, from the CCAC, that was approved by the CCAC and staff said, we're all in, is the project management team is staff. It works with staff, gets invited to every single meeting we're going to with the architect, is on the phone if we're on the architect.
Project management team of the CCAC and what, who are they, I mean, don't get around to the names if, if you don't want to, but.
Who is Rose Fivell?
Yeah, it is.
So, so that's a new committee that was formed.
No, that's an existing.
That's an existing subcommittee, yeah.
Yeah.
Essentially, to interrupt, um, because we were told we couldn't talk about square footage and cost, and I think this is on your direction, George. The project management team felt they were the only ones that were left to be considered. They were looking for a purpose, what are we doing here? And so, uh, I think both of you were absent at the last meeting, so Chairman Dostar took us, took us through, well, is this okay, is this not okay? It all had to do with how they worked with project management, it had nothing to do with anything else, essentially. Landscaping was there, we asked for a comprehensive on the next meeting, but there was no discussion at all of floor plans and looking at those spaces. And I, I think to, and Mary Grace hasn't worked with this very long and she hasn't seen, there's a, there's an excellent group of people there, and I'm not patting myself on the back, with some very good experience that I think would be very helpful in this process. So the, 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 and the message would go to the community, it's not being planned by staff, which I don't see, even though I think you're all great and I love you all, I don't see that as a positive.
No, and I, I don't think staff is, should be designing, I think staff gives input as to what, what they need to make their job function. So for example, for example, where the Public Works admin is, and be able to be multitasking to handle the counter and also be able to work independently when the counter's operating. That, you know, her, her space should not be behind a wall where she can't see the counter because then you can't multitask and those types of things. That's the type of input staff gives. And then the design team works to make those elements work. If you wanna come in and wholesale say, well, that's all fine and dandy, but we're just gonna say that it needs to be fifteen thousand square feet, something's gonna have to give. You're either gonna have to give up some kind of service or some type of operation or some type of, of, of use of the building. So that's, that's where that whole program management comes in, and then the police element is, is a whole nother ballgame, because there are so many requirements for their area of spaces of what they have to be, a minimum of what they have to be. And the design team does have an experienced professional who, specifically on police services. So I am happy to make sure that we come back reporting those elements of, here's why we're at where we are with these spaces, and here's how that connectivity is. I'll tell you, I think we still have some of that connectivity to work out with this floor plan. And, and then comment and critique is most definitely appreciated. But if we are gonna go down a road questioning the architect to the point of saying, well, you really don't need eighty square feet for that office, sixty square feet is fine, we're gonna run into a bit of a problem, because then the architect is, is not gonna be able to take their professional expertise and, and all of the code issues, all of the requirements to just fit furniture in and that type of thing to, to make it all work.
I understand, I understand.
So, can we just reduce it to two members of the CCAC instead of the entire group?
Well, I, I, I have to recharacterize with due respect to DeeDee here, I have an individual conversation with Steve before the meeting. And the intent of staff's recommendation to Steve to set up this project management team in this way was to make sure that that subcommittee was invited to every meeting with staff and the architect through design development, where we actually will be talking about floor plans and layout and detail and everything I read off on that scope of work, that project management team will be there if they choose to. So we're not having a noticed public meeting.
So we're, so you're saying if it didn't, if, no disrespect to that, so you're saying if it didn't happen before, then probably, you're saying it did, let's just say it did, but it will continue to be in the future.
Well, it hasn't been the case, they haven't had those meetings.
Correct.
They're just starting, but, but, let me add something, because if I understand the motion, we're basically saying, we're not gonna tell you what to do in terms of the square footage, although we think you should look at it and cut it down. But we are telling you that we're gonna reduce the budget requirement from what just came in by one point eight million dollars, and you come back to us and your staff and, and WRNS with your recommendations of what would need to be achieved to meet those budget targets in order to accomplish that.
That's correct.
I think that, I think this motion does say that.
That's what I'm hearing from you.
That's correct, and part of that will be the CCAC working with them to look at efficiencies, because those three members are very experienced in designing buildings. And, you know, maybe not, uh, the police, uh, uh, you know, component, the glass assumption is, so I think that's good.
The public, the public spaces are all the CCAC.
All, yeah, which, which is really important, because, okay, so we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
And, uh, I'm gonna call for the, with the amendments, and I'm gonna call for the vote, all in favor? Aye, any opposed, any session, motion carries, so.
Not a, not a, first we go on to the next item, some of the people at the other end of the room, Mike went to hear the final score, it was one eighteen to nineteen, now we're in state.
Oh, so glad.
And actually, it's one of the after the claim, but it took all the first reading out to the last.
Oh, good, good, good. So, you know, it's been it's been recorded at my house, so if you wanna go over and play or spend a couple of beers. I am here, I'll watch it anyway, thank you, Eddie, thank you.
I was before you along, can I ask a question?
About what?
This issue that is in the staff.
Wait a minute, about the item number fifteen?
We closed the number four.
No, you moved on.
Are you gonna bring back the development proposal as part of the budget then?
The development proposal.
The fee issue.
Yes, yeah, not part of the budget this cycle, but we will bring it back.
It'll be slotted in.
Yes.
That's a lot, that's has to work out, so we gotta figure that out.
I understand.
All right.
Who's this Mary Grace Villahence?
Now, huh, now, Robert, you're on. I was, boy, have you been sleeping?
Well, in essence of time, I'll I'll be great.
At least he started off right.
I just got your PowerPoint on my computer, I said, oh, this is great.
Yeah, thanks for the PowerPoint.
It's a lot like yours.
You know, it melted.
That's because it's like nine hundred degrees.
Yeah, well, yeah, of course, get out the windows open because we're close to the train tracks.
I haven't heard the train, I love hearing the train. You don't even hear it.
I hear them, I don't hear it, just hear. Okay, just real quick to get off, it's I'm gonna it's gonna be passed on to to Mike and Mary Grace. But tonight's recommendation is before you is a review of the two thousand sixteen seventeen capital improvement program. Our recommendations to review, discuss and provide feedback regarding proposed projects, programs and funding for the capital improvement program. As you're all aware, the CIP proposes, the five year CIP proposes projects to analyze, repair or improve town infrastructure and funding for those projects. We have over eighteen projects categorized into three areas of streets and transportation, drainage and town buildings, parks and facilities. Just to reiterate, the first year the capital CIP is budgeted, the remaining amounts are are just projections for programs out in the out years. So it's presented tonight in a workshop format to allow for 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 questions and discussions about broader objectives to be considered for future projects and priorities for allocating funds. So this year's projects have approximately six point two million, inclusive of the civic center and road maintenance program. Five year program totals about forty four million and I think a big portion of that, we had that discussion today. So without further ado, I'd like, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Well, actually, in the interest of time, Robert did a great job going through the first two slides.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we can go through and just skip over the first two slides because Robert gave the perfect overview, but I was gonna give. What we're what now I'd like to do though, turn it over to Mary Grace.
I feel like you're getting punted again.
Because what we wanna do is really focus in and spend a little bit of time, but briefly, on, you know, three programs and go over more specifically the improvements we are planning for those programs. Those programs being drainage improvements, road maintenance improvements and bike and pet improvements, so.
You kinda jumped ahead on the staff report, you know, and so I did ask a question and I really would like to understand. Specifically like in the gas tax, and I know that was highlighted in my questions to the city managers. So there are these large amounts that are carried over year after year, the number keeps growing. And this happens in some other areas, but more so in the gas tax. And the gas tax comes in the same areas that the parcel tax comes in. And I guess what's the logic, if I could understand, why we wanna carry that major portion over and not reserve the parcel tax for other types of activities which can also be, you know, we can use it for multiple activities, whereas the gas tax is very, very focused.
And I I I think on that, and and we've had noted that before in the prior years, we've been wanting to use the gas tax for as a funding mechanism for streets and roads. And and in the out years, because this first year is the first sixteen seventeen is the first year will be the budget that will follow. In the out years, we'll we'll take that in consideration and we'll do the adjustments and put more of the road impact components into the gas tax, create more projects for the in special parcel tax and carry that forward.
So you're saying you'll you'll flip some of that in the out years, but the current fiscal year.
The current fiscal year, you're right, we have about a hundred thousand in road maintenance program and seventy five thousand for bridge maintenance program. And there's some engineering staff costs and some estimates that we program into it for as the staff time. Gas tax allows for staff time for the components of, well, you do all these, all our capital projects for streets and roads. So there's an allotment of allocation that we can allocate the gas tax funds and that's what we use that for.
We recognize that, I mean, the six oh seven, that's about the cost of the spring patching and the and the slurry seal for the whole year. And that's how much money we have, plus we're getting two twenty five more. Why we would spend parcel tax funds on that, it's where we have other needs.
And we could do that, we could bring it back or.
No, I think that's that I think that's pretty clear, I mean, I don't think that's the council would object. We we should use other people's money first before we.
Right.
That's a good point.
And we can do that, we can we can reprogram that for the next, when it comes to council next month. We have no problem, I can meet with with, you know, Mike and the engineering department and and do that and allocate projects from that are street related, from the parcel tax to the gas tax. I mean, we could allocate a big portion this year and then next year deal with two hundred and twenty five thousand of gas tax that or like we anticipated here is in the out years, use it. But we have no problem just adjusting.
Yeah, I would keep the revenue for this year.
Yeah, we can do that.
Things things are gonna come up, okay?
No, we can do that and it'll give more more projects for the the parcel tax.
Thanks.
Any other member of council have a comment on this one item about using gas tax money first?
It's actually a good idea.
Good, okay, so let's move forward, next, storm drain.
Okay, so we are gonna talk, just a brief overview of what we're recommending for dealing with storm drain improvements, roadway improvements and bike pet improvements. And I'll start with storm drain. So storm drain, we have a master plan and the projects that we're identifying here, they were selected based on information from the master plan, field observations that the public works maintenance operation team sees out there, nuisance flooding issues that happen yearly and things that are just wearing out and comments and concerns that are raised by citizens. And when we were laying out these projects, we were looking at, okay, let's program dollars to get some actual things done so that they're not just all going into studies and for the future, but to help citizens experience some some benefit of their dollars coming through. So that's that's how these were laid out. So one of the challenges in the picture reflects this is that along Stockbridge, there's this series of concrete swales and intersections. And some have been paved over, they've got some grade issues, they're dilapidated and they're impeding how the water flows, it create ponding. So we're looking at the first project to rehabilitate those and look at the road cross section. So this was actually a tier two project that's identified in the storm drain master plan. And in the storm drain master plan, it identified two parts to it, one, taking care of the concrete valley gutters at these intersections. And then the second part, changing the cross section of the street to have a little bit more crowns, the water goes where you want it to go. So we looked at this to be coupled with a pavement project this year along Stockbridge that could use some of the pavement dollars to accommodate the road cross section and then deal with the concrete valley gutters.
So is this the six hundred and forty thousand?
On page thirty three of the chapter four.
Yes, the, yes.
So you also have listed up there, which is something very, and very interesting with regards to the Los Lomitos school. And I know we're in waiting period and we've reached out to them and there's some discussions going on. But if they say, hey, yeah, let's go, we need to have money allocated to do that because that was, you know, that that could be a very impactful.
That is correct.
So and I realize there has to be a design first and they have to approve it and things like that. But if we're spending all the six forty on this.
We're not, we're not spending all the six forty, you'll, so if I can go through the projects, like all of these projects that I have identified are within that six forty.
Wait, wait, what about the Velberg cover, isn't that under, I don't.
So the Velberg is its own CIP?
Yeah.
I understand, but it's listed up here.
This is all storm drain improvements.
So let me just make a comment, I I've got a great deal of frustration between the staff report and the PowerPoint. And my biggest frustration with the staff report was it was focused focused on revenue. You saw all the revenue from funding sources, every page in the staff report to have. And this is in the CIP plan, had it has a horizontal column that shows different years of funding sources. And the description of the project above it is a general description, for example, on drainage. This is page twenty three of the CIP, it's it's quite gentle. So my comment throughout the staff report is, these are huge numbers, what are the specific projects we're talking about? It was extremely frustrating to me. And then I I look at the what you're presenting now and this is what I was looking for in the staff report, it's like, wow, those are the concrete, I didn't mean to use the pun. Those are those are the specific projects that that I was looking for. I feel good about that, but there's no dollars associated with each of those projects. What I really wanted, I mean, I can appreciate knowing that we have the funding is really important. So I I don't have a problem seeing the funding line as.
That's actually the expenditure, not the funding.
It says funding source, so that's.
But that's expenditure, yes, sir.
Okay, so it just doesn't break down the expenditure then into these pro. I I'd like to see each of the projects identified, and some of it may be a placeholder because you may not know exactly what the cost is going to be. But I'd like to see in the future be so much more helpful for me if each of the specific projects that you guys are recommending working on had a dollar associated with it. Then I could make a judgment, wow, that sounds like a really good use of money, we should do that, no, that doesn't look right. Without that, I have a hard, really hard time.
Residents wanna see that too. Residents wanna see if we're spending money on a specific project, they're interested in that.
You don't wanna hear what the residents have to say about it because I'm being really polite and I just don't know and they want the detail. And we actually have moved a very significant piece of our, what do we call it, the reserve, not the reserve, but the
General fund.
The unutilized portion, the general fund into the into the capital improvement project bucket in which we all agreed to do, and it was a good decision. But I just wanna see how we're gonna spend it.
Yeah, right, those will be identified, once we identify the 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 master plans and and the council direction and confirmation. At the end of the staff report, there's four items that we're looking for. And so as we identify through these master plans, we'll get some, identify some projects. We have tier one projects for the bike pad that we're gonna follow. We have two tier projects for the master plant, the drainage. And so we'll we'll develop some programs and that's what you see here and then we'll kinda come up with what the cost will be.
So maybe because it's study session at level, you're just presenting concepts.
Right.
We want you to.
But I don't really have a good sense of whether, you know, project one up there is, this is the Stockbridge thing?
Yeah, and I I can, I understand what you're asking at.
Or whether it's fifty, I don't know.
So the the stock, the the Stockbridge project for the concrete is about two, I believe it was identified in the master plan about two hundred and twenty five, two hundred and fifty thousand. And about another four hundred and some odd thousand was for the modifying of the crown. I follow what you're saying and we can we can provide that in the in the future.
Can can I let, I guess, start?
Yeah, just a question, because I look at these projects that you said are prioritizing. I'm sure you've told me and I forgot.
No problem.
Every storm, the biggest issue that I that I hear about is right along El Camino, you have those.
Yes.
Where is it addressed?
Right there. That's this, but it doesn't address it.
No.
Isn't isn't this in El Camino?
That's that's El Camino.
So the the, yeah, the it's, there is forty some odd million of drainage projects that are identified in the storm drain master plan. The El Camino one, oh, boy, I'm going from memory here. That I seem to recall it was somewhere between six and eight million is what it was estimated. And there's some downstream things that need to be coordinated. It's gonna take multiple years. It has. This does not list every project in the master plan.
I understood, you're saying these are the ones that are recommended this fiscal year and you're looking for guidance. I'm telling you, the biggest complaint I get is none of these things. It's water, standing water, as people are going down El Camino for a number of streets, it pretty has a dollar something, you know, a number of streets.
Oh, yeah.
So just to let you know, to the extent you're looking for direction, that's what I hear about the most.
Well, I do.
So.
Also, you you indicated in the last, I'm not sure if it was Michelle or Gordon, but said that one of the reasons we're getting puddling there is because there's a stopped up drainage.
Right.
And so we need to, so I think we asked somebody.
Caltrans.
To get with Caltrans to say, why is that stopped up? How come we didn't know about it and it needs to be unstopped because we're flooding our 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 neighborhoods? Especially Stockbridge and and and.
And that 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 I'll I'll get some answer to that with maintenance department.
Algegras and City.
So 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 based on, so based on the 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 direction we're taking at the saving, one of the things that we will put in here is basically the engineer, preliminary engineer to take a look at what is the solution to resolve that, the the what, the the issue.
That's exactly the feedback we're looking for is that we've gone through the drainage master plan, identified these projects as potential projects and put some placeholder dollars in there. But if this isn't where you're hearing the issues in the community, this we're hearing, you hear different stuff.
Yeah, the place holder dollars.
No, no, it's just a number based on these projects.
Right.
We're saying these are, that's the dollar, here's those projects. Should we do some of these, should we not do some of these, should we focus more on that?
Just can I interject to the chair? I agree, this is a project that's gonna take five plus years, just in the political side, the caltrian side, how long does it take to get an intersection of the light or across? So we have multiple entities that we have to deal with. So as far as the allocation of funds, but, you know, this could be a placeholder on here to start that process because Mike might be out of office before he actually gets his done. So and he doesn't wanna be, and so understand that.
So.
That's fast, it's it's a process.
So this is, this is great feedback. And so what what we were looking at was we were looking at numbers one and two were things that would be physically done this year. Item three, we were looking at, okay, let's get that one started and going. What I'm hearing is you want us to look at the El Camino Real drainage element and get that started and going. Hi, that's great. The conceptual design for Los Lomitos, that's already already funded and that will keep working. We've already had a meeting with them and the school board is gonna be hearing the item at their June meeting, their June thirteen meeting. And we'll be moving forward, so by end of summer, fall, we'll have some feedback on that one.
I would postpone number five. It's too expensive at this point.
The only reason that one is on there is because we were approached with a grant opportunity that they would be doing that independently. So it's not taking staff time, it's not taking city dollars. It's a grant dependent.
Well, the grant, the grant opportunity, couldn't it be applied to Los Lomitos, it's the same thing. We're we're we're.
The upstream.
I I am gonna be investigating that and see where where the opportunities are, what's been submitted, how that's going. I I can't tell you, I have all the details behind that right now.
It was a phone call, it was a phone call to to staff saying, hey, we're interested in looking at this particular issue.
Right.
Drainage wise, do you have anything in your town that's not.
It's, yeah, well, we will.
I would work on the CRP at this point.
It's it's just something that we're we're working on with.
Can can you tell me what the engineering committee for relining the slopes and bottom of the.
So the one of the tier one projects that's identified in the storm drain master plan is refurbishment of that channel.
Not the Marsh Road portion?
No, no.
On from Watkins on up or top on down, I don't know.
I'm I'm gonna have to go back and look at the plan and give you more details on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's some. Yeah, so, uh, that's something that'll take many years. It's something that'll take many years, and so it was something that staff was looking like, maybe we oughta start getting an understanding of what that is.
So, it's hard. Yeah.
And, uh, get it out in concept, so we can start looking at that programming for funding for future years, but right now, we just don't have enough on it. There's one section that's about six hundred and fifty thousand, there's another section that's about four million. So, we just don't have enough to really qualify and quantify that well enough yet, so that, that's what we're looking at, getting that effort started. And that's what I, I would, based on your comment, I would recommend adding the El Camino Real here and plugging some dollars to that, uh, to start that coordination effort and start figuring out, uh, concept solutions for that.
Does item two, the culverts, uh, there, does that include the Bellbrook, Culvert?
It does not, Bellbrook is its own project.
So, where is that on your list here?
I, I, it's not listed here, but it's its own CIP.
It's, 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 yeah, on this list, it, it's listed, it's its own CIP within the actual document.
No, I, I see it in the document, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sense of the two different presentations. One is what's in the staff report, which is in the CIP document, and the other is, uh, is.
This is the drainage.
This is, this presentation is designed to, to focus your attention, and we need your feedback on this, there's a lot of other projects that are already ongoing, that are listed as actual CIP projects you've already made decisions on. Moving forward, there's some, these lists are on the back.
Yeah, and this, this was particularly. This is the six hundred and forty thousand dollar item that I, I felt it would be important to bring to you, here's what the thought process is behind this bigger number, getting you more detail.
So, this is just on the, uh, have this.
Correct, correct.
Great, that's helpful.
So, and I do hear what you're saying, and next time we have a presentation, it'll be broken down a little bit more.
We just love it.
So.
So, does the, does, does the Stockbridge concrete swale and regrade go down to El Camino, or is that something?
It's the intersections, so it, it doesn't carry it all the way down to El Camino, but it hits the intersections, I believe, between El Camino and Nora, I think is the street.
Okay, and the plan is to regrade Stockbridge this next year, is that correct?
It's about five. Correct.
Do the soil, uh, on the story as well, before.
To, yes, we've, we would get the engineering done and get the construction done, so we'd be looking at a construction in spring of next year.
So, I think that is, that project seems like a good project, since we're gonna do the street, and it, that seems to me smart to also address the drainage issue along that street, but carry it all the way to El Camino?
And that would include repainting.
Because that is one of those problem areas on El Camino already, I know that, yeah.
Yes.
But it, it drains to El Camino.
It's gotta get out there.
And then get stuck.
And then get stuck, so our work, Stockbridge draining to El Camino, it'll.
Right. It's not gonna fix the El Camino problem.
It's not gonna fix the El Camino.
No.
But it will, it will take care of some ponding issues that Public Works Maintenance, they get a lot of calls on these intersections.
Yeah.
Well, well, what's gonna happen with the two neighbors that, or three neighbors that are there on the corner, one being Mr. Rogero, who calls me every time it rains. Uh, so we're gonna run all the water down and make it very efficient coming down towards El Camino, and he's there at the corner, and he's gonna get flooded.
And it's not gonna get any more water than's coming out.
And last time the rain, he, he had a ten thousand dollar bill with regards to, to, you know, his house being flooded, because, you know, we keep raising the, the level of the street. So, I, I, I don't think really that it's, 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 it's a responsible thing for us to do, to make the water flow faster, to flood people we know are already getting flooded.
Well, I.
We have to solve that problem and the, and the problem at El Camino as soon as possible, before we make the water come even faster.
So, the issue isn't with the, the, the Stockbridge project that's identified in the Storm Drain Master Plan is twofold, and I believe it's gonna help part of the situation that you're talking about. Because part of the situation is that the water is crossing over the road, because the, the road doesn't have enough crown to direct the water where it's supposed to go. So, part of this project, the painting project, will be looking at regrading the crown to keep the water from doing that, which should help that problem. It's not gonna change the amount of water that gets down to El Camino, it will keep it on the right side of the road, so you don't have it.
Switching over to.
Switching over and, over inundating one individual.
I don't wanna over engineer it, and, and I'm sure you're gonna do a great job, but I can say from observing, from observing it, the water comes down El Camino and it turns into Stockbridge. It's not that water's coming down Stockbridge towards El Camino, that's gonna make it worse. The issue with those houses that are in that corner, those three houses, is the water is coming down El Camino and it converts into, into our street. And that's what's flooding those people, and what you're gonna do is you're gonna add to that water, I realize you're only gonna add half of it, but that's just gonna make the water higher.
And. And we're not adding to it, it's not any different amount of water, um, but it's, it's a local project.
Well, I think it should be, okay, uh, it, it's my.
I think it's, uh, it's a, it's a.
I think, I think adding, adding the El Camino project into getting that one going is what I'm hearing, and something that is critical and urgent, yeah.
Yeah. And then bring back, okay, so you're on to, which, the next one?
Next slide.
Roadway improvements?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Roadway improvements.
So, roadway improvements.
Is that, is that, uh, uh, referencing one of the?
What dollar is that working?
Is it, um?
You're a bank with a big million dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's part of this.
There's, there's a slurry one, and then there's a road maintenance, if I remember correctly.
Page twenty-seven. A lot of those, the old street survey.
It's got a patination issue, CIP document there.
It's page twenty. It's the one million.
One million.
Yeah.
There's a slurry one too, isn't there?
Because it's, it's, uh, the project name is Bridge Maintenance Program?
Yeah, it, it's nineteen, it, there's a, when it printed, yeah, so the, it's on the bottom of page nineteen, and it carries over on the page twenty.
No.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. When it.
Oh.
Well, everyone's, uh, the project is.
Oh, that would make me all crazy.
Yes.
Could you tell me, I, I don't know what a maintenance dig out is, could you?
Yes, so where you see failures in the pavement, where it's starting to crack, uh, in the localized area, and it's starting, chunks are starting to come out. Uh, what we do to repair that is what we call a dig out, so it's an area that around the failure is dug out, and we actually repair the subbase or, uh, to build it back up. A patch is just where we go in on the top and fill a pothole, a dig out is where there's actual work to dig it out and make sure the section is competent. And that's important, 'cause those tend to bleed out farther and cause additional road failure, makes it more expensive, so if we catch them soon, it's good.
So, the, this, the proposal, if I read it right, is to go up to a million twenty-five thousand for these projects, where in previous years we've been at three hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct.
That's a big jump then, actually, it was like, almost about seven hundred thousand.
It was about seven, yeah, we, we, it was about three hundred and fifty thousand two years ago, this current year, I think, we increased it.
Yeah, it was about seven thousand.
This, the following years, we're proposing increasing it more, and what's driving this is what's called on pavement management program. And so what, what that's telling us is that previously where, uh, the town got by with slurry seal type projects, which are less expensive, now the town's gonna have to start investing in overlays, which are more expensive, resurfacing treatments, in order to keep the road, uh, conditions similar to what we have today.
And, uh, it, in terms of major road activity, uh, it looks like one is an overlay on Comino Lago.
That is, yes.
And, like this last year, I don't know, we did, uh, we, I don't remember what we did, but we did.
It's currently under construction.
Avenue, I think we did, did.
We did after, but, but for this year, uh, the large project, project is gonna be an overlay on Almond Drawl.
Yes. Yes.
Which, which is gonna get started.
It's, so what is being coordinated with, with those projects is, uh, uh, Public Works Maintenance Superintendent and, uh, engineering staff reach out to the utilities to say, okay, we're coming in with an overlay project. Do you have something that needs to be replaced in the street before we overlay it, because we don't want you digging it up after? So, on Almond Drawl right now, what is happening is PG is going in there to replace their gas lines, which need to be done, and that was because of their coordination on that, and as soon as they're complete, we'll be coming on the heels of that with the overlay, so that.
So, that's a sixteen, seventeen project is on draw?
That is fifteen, sixteen, it's, it's, it's been awarded.
Oh, it's fifteen. But it's included in this million twenty-five order?
No, no.
No.
Sure.
But that's just to give you an idea, so the next, the next two that are being looked at, um, for, or that are due are Stockbridge and, uh, Comino Lago for the overlays. They'll, there's still the slurry seal program, so with pavement, it's kinda like old skin, it needs moisturizer to keep it happy, you know? Wind and rain tend to dry it out, so the slurry seals help keep it moisturized, so it perpetuates the life of the pavement, you can only do that so long. Um, the pavement ultimately will need some next level of, of work done on it, so these two streets have been identified for that. There will still be about three hundred thousand or so that'll be applied to slurry seal, which is really important, 'cause that just perpetuates the life of your streets, and it's really a good thing to do. And, uh, uh, it's right around this time of year that the staff will work with the pavement engineering team to identify which streets are appropriate for slurry. They use the PCI index and the pavement management plan as a guide, but it takes putting your eyes on it too. That, that, that's a calculation, and it's really important to go out and, and take a look, so they'll be identifying those streets, and then we'll be able to bring those streets back to you, saying, based on the field observation, based on what we're seeing as these streets needing this now, these are the ones that are recommended for slurry for this year.
Sure, is, if I could ask, just a quick question with regards to the need to get away from the slurry seal on specific streets because they're older. Do the streets age more, the more construction we do and the more times we open them up, is that a function?
Yeah, so, uh, where I worked previously, we had the worst roads in the Bay Area, so I had to deal a lot, bad pavement. Um, every time you cut a pavement, it reduces the life of the pavement significantly.
Okay, so, so let me, then, given that information, then the, then I would, I would suggest that perhaps at a future time, when we're looking at fees.
Yes.
For encroachment permits, for people who are cutting into our road, that we raise that, because what they're doing is causing us to prematurely age our street more so than what our plan was, which was to slurry seal them every five years.
Mm-hmm.
Which is, was our plan, and, but now we're spending a million dollars a year in expenses.
Well, and I'll, I'll, it's, you know, even with slurry seal, you can't slurry seal for forever.
Well, I understand, but.
It's like, you think the, think of a pavement kinda like a bank account, and every time you drive over it, you, you take a withdrawal, it, pretty soon you have no money left.
Yeah. But slurry seal is really good, I, you know.
It has, it's a great, great thing, yes, yes.
But that suggestion, though, is more like an impact fee versus a fee for an encroachment permit, so we would have to do some sort of additional analysis of future cost to maintain the road.
A next step would have to be made.
A next step, you said, right?
And, uh, it would have to be very carefully calculated, so that it's not double charging, because there are road, um, impacts and permits.
To the chair.
Cost of the fee.
Yes, sir, uh, council member, please.
I, I, do we even take into consideration, because both, uh, Almond Drawl and Stock, uh, Stockbridge, both have a considerable amount of construction on them, or?
Sure do.
Yeah, and so, I mean, are we taking that into consideration, 'cause with all those trucks going in and out of there?
When will that construction be done?
That's, it's a good question.
Good lawyers.
Right, I mean, I don't know, but.
So, that's, that's really a, you know, we have to kinda foresee what, uh, is in the pipeline, you know, also.
So, you're, and you're also always going to have where people are gonna be doing something, and roads are designed to accommodate reasonable amounts of truck traffic.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Not fresh roads.
So. Pardon?
Not fresh roads.
Yes.
Fresh roads, fresh roads, so they get.
To accommodate the traffic.
The truck traffic that we go into construction sites that potentially term, I mean, I, I would hope that we monitor, so that if in fact something does happen, we can.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think that's, that's a very important point, I just don't stagnate our road improvement program, switching from street to street based on who's buying the house and remodeling, and who's not.
It's, it's like sometimes we have a.
Just trying to get some oversight.
I know.
A slew of constructions on one street, right, you know, there, there's like this renaissance in, it kinda moves from street to street, okay, but next?
We do, every.
Next. Bike Ped.
Bike Ped, oh, yeah, I had a question on the.
Which one are you on now?
There you go.
On the, uh, staff report, because I just, you know, I see four or maybe four thousand dollars, uh, budgeted for bike pad.
There you go.
Where's the, the CIP?
What are we talking about?
Is that?
Is that PJ two, or are you talking about? Yeah, the hybrid vehicle, because I see a hybrid vehicle up there.
And I, I, yeah, I.
I apologize, I'm trying to, sorry, but looking at the page right above the, the road made program, we've got a hundred thousand dollars for walkers on the, on the quad gates.
Yeah.
Has that changed, because we now have a quad zone, knowing we might wanna expedite that, it's a hundred thousand dollars, and expedite that?
Yeah.
We want to move it forward.
Okay, all right, great.
We're, we're gonna move it forward.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I didn't wanna say what.
I thought you just wanted to get station, though.
Okay, so first of all, this is just a graphic, this isn't meant to. So, this, this is just a graphic, it's not meant to represent ECR Almond Drawl, it's, it's just a graphic.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
So, this one is page sixteen, is that right?
Eight.
Eighteen?
Sixteen is of the same image as this page.
Yeah, right, this is a, a new.
This is page eighteen.
This is just a graphic, so.
Got it.
Um, so, uh, we had a meeting of the Bike Ped Committee, and had some discussion about capital improvement projects and their ideas and recommendations to council. Um, and I've included their suggestions into here. The BPAC is scheduled, or is being scheduled to meet again in early June. Uh, they didn't have an opportunity at the last meeting to really review the study that was done for the class one, class two bike routes assessment that was prepared by Mark Thomas. That was to look at the feasibility of the class one, class two routes that was identified in the Bike Ped Master Plan. So, we'll be discussing that with them at that June meeting, um, but, I'm sorry, wasn't quite been.
Sorry.
So, and will, we expect that they'll repackage their recommendations, or possibly, I'm not sure, but, uh, figure that we need to give them an opportunity to give some input on their comments on that, uh, of, uh, feasibility study.
Well, they have, she had listed here.
So, on the next page.
Our, our, good, on the eighteen is what we talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, in addition to something that would be in another category, which is the signage or the.
Correct.
The traffic control stuff, which is, we talked about putting those flashing speed limit signs on all routes to school and all our major thoroughfares.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up. Yes. Yes.
Because they do help slow down the traffic, and so, there was only twenty-five K in there, and we thought that, if you look at those, if they're twenty-five K apiece, I think really we probably need another five or six, is what we were talking about.
That's correct.
So, that's, you know, a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars additional.
So, for, what that item is, is that there was a good deal of discussion about along heavily used, uh, Bike Ped routes for kids getting to and for school or what have you, trying to get some kind of, uh, awareness in of people's speed, so that they would slow down. And putting back the radar, radar feedback signs along those corridors would be beneficial, and looking at where that would fit into things, we have another CIP, and that one is called. Traffic Safety Improvements, and I believe we have fifty thousand currently budgeted in there.
It's on page fifteen.
Page fifteen?
Yeah.
And, uh, we're looking at, at folding into that, coming back with a recommendation of, here's where these could go, here's what the cost could be, do you wanna spread it over multiple years, do you wanna do it all this year, that type of thing, but we haven't had a chance to scope that out all the way as yet.
Okay, so that's that fifty thousand that you're thinking about, that's only twenty-five thousand each?
There's a twenty-five K each, and then something, uh.
And there's speed radar.
This, this particular item.
I don't think, I don't think they're, uh, uh, quite twenty-five, yeah. Yeah.
This particular item, the fifty K is also speed surveys, tra- traffic.
Yeah.
That's a way to do it, yeah.
That's what I've.
So it can also funds some of those traffic control measures.
Right.
Uh and those devices might not be twenty five K or less than that, hopefully this is.
But they're not budgeted in here.
But they're not budgeted, that amount that that against my words is not a problem.
Yeah, so I I I would, I'd like to suggest that we at least consider adding to that um to put in another five or four or something like that, but that I mean, we have one on Watkins, for example, and you know, and and there and other places too, so there's one on Ensignal. Uh but they are very effective and I do think that we 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 should put them on.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and and if we do four or five this year, four or five next year, that we probably would get all of our major thoroughfares done.
So if I'm hearing correctly, to look to increase the budget of the traffic safety measures, uh C I P to accommodate and modify this.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's a little.
I'd say it comes like, well, traditionally, I haven't.
Right, right, so that's why I'm, and and to also note that one of the big complaints I got about the last bike paths, bike path where we did was number of signs, what the signs look like.
Yeah, we had to address that.
Well, that's fine, now we're talking about adding eight flashing signs in the middle of town and people are telling me they don't like the signs, they don't want to sign them now, so.
Right, I think that would be really cruel.
I think it's a it's a a bigger issue than just let's.
Okay, we can move the signs around, you know, periodically and not just add signs, I can imagine that would be a lot of.
Well, these would take place, these are, when we take place with a speed limit sign, because that's essentially what they are. It says speed on the sh- and it says your speed pass.
Well, that that's a policy call, yes, correct.
Yeah. So uh okay, so I understand what you're asking for. Um I think that the item that you have listed up there is number, one is the priority, we've talked about it many times, but it it's really about what are the specifics we're gonna do to make that happen.
Right.
Uh this year we did some work on the Oak Grove uh Middlefield intersection. Uh uh item number two, uh regarding Oak Grove, I know that Menlo Park is very involved in that. Uh and I personally, I think that's a good thing. I don't think it's the number one priority for us in this area, but I think it's a good thing, so I I don't I don't want to give the wrong message. Uh number three, uh uh helping with kids getting through the park to get to Ensignal School. We've had a lot of discussion about that, I also think that's a, I'd love to see us enable that gate to be open, that's the biggest issue for there, but sure, if we can help make that happen, I think it's, that's good. I I think, and I may only be speaking for myself, but maybe I'm speaking with the council, I think the biggest priority in the Bike Ped Master Plan is putting the class two bike lanes in place on Middlefield Road. We talked about Middlefield Road is is our key focus and it got knocked out of this year, so we could do the class three stuff, which we got a huge amount of pushback on.
So it was our number one priority when we prioritized.
The Middlefield Road was, and and I don't want to lose it from sixteen seventeen, I think we should be
Okay.
we should be targeting Middlefield Road and and I think one of, I I actually personally, I like that we did the class three bike lanes, I just think we should have done it a little slower and done a test, maybe one of the, you know, smaller roads where people could see what the sheroes would look like and be able to give feedback on it. Um so with Middlefield Road, I would hope that we don't do fluorescent green from Redwood City to Menlo Park. But I do it, I mean, I I know we did a little tester at the Marsh Road intersection and that got very good, very good reviews.
Which is really very helpful, very helpful. Yes.
So I would like to see us extend that and do this in pieces and, you know, I know you guys have to plan how to do it so it's cost effective, because you don't want to start and stop and start and stop, I understand that. So but I would love you to come to us with a proposal to get it done in a way that we can show people what it's gonna look like. Maybe we do Marsh to Watkins, or we do Redwood City to Watkins.
Or by the high school, or by the schools.
Yeah, by the schools. Yeah, by the accidents are occurring, Oak Grove and so we should try and do that.
Yeah, and and so.
Agree with that, but look where the accidents are from, that's the priority, this is to help safer to school, but for me, that's the biggest priority on the Bike Ped area.
Right.
And just kind of to reiterate on the Bike Ped Master Plan, when we did the that plan, it was thirteen million and it dwindled down to seven million worth of priority projects that we went through.
Mm-hmm.
And the Middlefield Road is about one point five million. That was the planning estimate on doing that, so um again, we're bringing projects that, based off funding levels, projects that like the low hanging fruit, what we can do, what we can program in, and here's some ideas, but right now.
But we moved five million dollars.
Right, and it's something that the council.
It's a big project, I know it's a big project, but it will show people we're doing something that will, that addresses a problem that we're all focused on, which is safer to school.
And just if you ride your bike along, it is, it is, we can do something.
So if I can suggest possibly um um that we prioritize that to get some engineering done and what have you, and then mid-year, we're able to bring you back. Here's, here's some options, some proposal, we'll check in with you periodically before then, but um look at possibly a mid-year adjustment where we can quantify more of what we could potentially get constructed this year or do it in phases, come up with a a plan that makes sense
Mm-hmm.
and then budget for the next year for the next part of it and what have you.
We probably don't want to be doing a lot of construction along Middlefield during the summer months this summer, because.
Well, we're not gonna do that.
Totally close, Mark.
Nice to do it.
But but it doesn't sound like we'll have a proposal until the winter anymore.
Yeah, right.
I think I think you gotta plan by the time we go out with an R F P, by the time we gather the data and be able to analyze what makes sense, look at uh what works for bikes, peds, vehicles, all of that, and then come back to you, then we could potentially get something out for a construction in spring, late spring.
And and we check to our neighbors, because Palo Alto's considering a road that in the middle of the take one lane each crash, so.
Yeah.
So the Oak Grove though does need to be done at the same time as they're doing, as Menlo Park is doing theirs, because I mean, you can't have Menlo Park put it in and then suddenly it's like.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, couldn't we kind of segment it, I mean, I really think that uh, you know, coordinating with Menlo Park around Oak Grove and Menlo-Atherton High School, and then maybe even just around Ensignal, the ingress and egress.
Most definitely, and I think our plan was to be coming back to you in June with the Oak Grove recommendation. And yes, definitely coordination with our neighbors, we we are not isolated, we don't live alone.
Yeah, we we have discussed this with Menlo Park, and although Menlo Park clearly has adopted their portion of Oak Grove as a class two, they have the same challenge we do, and that is, it's gonna require removal of parking. And so that's really our first step, is to approach the uh residences along, you know, within the Atherton portion.
So if they're not gonna do it, then we don't budget it, for sure.
Right, to 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 get their thoughts on whether or not they can live with removal parking. And of course, Menlo Park has a much longer, you know, strip to to do, so um I don't think anything's gonna happen quickly, but we are working with Menlo Park, and our first step, again, is to outreach the residents to make sure that they're they're gonna, you know, be supportive of parking removal.
Is this on both sides of Middlefield or just west?
It's just on the west side.
Yeah.
Yeah, what what we had suggested at the at the um Bike Ped meeting was that it would just be to the school, but then I was suggested that going from Middlefield to Edge, which is where the turnoff, so that would be, that we'd be shallow, that would be shallow.
So class three.
Correct.
Because there's small kids that are driving to that school.
And that pretty much has no parking on it.
To to Edge, it makes it a lot.
Well, and 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 a class three is a different, different animal, because it doesn't, it's basically where the bikes are sharing the road with the cars. It does not require a separate lane, which does not require additional pavement or removal of parking. So c- class threes are much, you know, easier to implement.
We don't have to put them so close together and, you know, so grotesquely painted on the road.
Yes.
Okay, what do you know?
Well, I mean, that's, this is, that's a maintenance call issue for, maybe the council can weigh in on that. The types of sheroes we have now, they're thermalized, so they last longer, they're less long-term maintenance, if we paint them, just.
We're talking every two years.
If 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 you paint them, basically, almost every year.
Yeah.
You know, because the paint nowadays, it just, it doesn't last very long.
Doesn't stick.
Like, there's, on that one, should we, I mentioned to George earlier, in retrospect, uh first time out, probably wise to paint them, and then when they're accepted, you know what's going on, then thermalize, and that'd be my recommendation.
And I I I agree with that and also, I I mean, we've talked about this four or five times. I go through other communities, they don't have their sheroes as close as ours.
Yeah.
So they're either reading a different requirement or something, but they're they're just not as close as ours. And um I think that there's gotta be room for us to make a judgment that we can make them put the space down.
And and there is room, I mean, the M U T C D does not prescribe specific spacing.
It does, it's it, but it's a guideline.
It's a guideline.
It's it's just, it's, no, it's 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 a guideline, it's advisory, because again, these are, these are not regulatory
Hmm.
signs or regulatory markings, these are advisory type markings, so I I think the town does have the ability to determine how, you know, what the spacing ought to be.
Oh, so we need to make sure that Steve knows that when we go around and look at those, and he takes all that into consideration when he's deciding where we should.
So then we'll scrape it up and we'll have a black mark. We'll have a little flat patch. Okay, can we move on, because it's getting late and um I'd like to move on.
Yes, yes. Okay, so we're looking for feedback, which we've gotten some good feedback um already. And then um so in the first two, I don't know if there's additional that we want to look at, but then confirmation of timing for the quad gates on Watkins feasibility study and confirmation of the addition of the Caltrain Station uh project study.
So following up on the quad gate study uh for Watkins, um I think it would really be good to move down uh to this church and sell it down.
I always phrase it a little, I'm very good. I was gonna say, I phrase it a little different, it seems to me that if we have established quiet zone on on Fair Oaks, I I would make it more a priority to just do, whatever, I would do as much as we can this year and not just, I don't know, does it time again, it'll take a full year for the study?
I would.
All right, I would want to really, really push this forward as opposed to have it be a multi-year project.
Yeah.
Because we're not gonna get the benefit from Fair Oaks until this is done.
All right, so some of the things we need to still, one of the things that the town can do and has control over is to basically hire an engineer to do a a pretty detailed estimate of what improvements are gonna be required and how much those improvements are gonna cost. The actual construction, what my current belief is, is that that has to be done by Caltrain. Okay, because it's within their right of way, whether or not they will allow the town to do the design, hire the contractor to actually construct the quad gates, that is a question mark, we have not explored that with Caltrain. The quad gates at uh Fair Oaks was a Caltrain project, it was not a Town of Atherton project.
So I I have a little bit to take, I I agree with uh Mike's sentiment that, hey, we're, it's great, we're getting a quiet zone at Fair Oaks, we're not gonna get the full benefit of it until we've got a quiet zone in Watkins, I totally agree with that. And therefore, that makes the quiet zone in Watkins a priority, whi- which is what you said. I I think the first thing we have to do though, and I think this was in the R F P with the consulting firm that has helped us with the Fair Oaks quiet zone, is they need to determine what is necessary in order to get a quiet zone in Watkins. And I'm not sure that just putting in quad gates there is sufficient. And if if I recall the discussion that previously, when we when we uh when we hired them, was because of the proximity of station lane to uh to the railroad crossing. And I think there's a piece of private property that impedes into where the quad gate would have to be, I'm not sure, but I'd like to hear from the consultant first, what's, what what we need to do in order to obtain the quiet zone, because if we can't get the quiet zone with the quad gates, we're, I don't think we're allowed.
So that would have to be part of the study, and that would be at the scope of the, you know.
Yeah, so if we've, we've already determined through our consultant that installation of a quad gate would make Watkins quiet zone eligible. But some of the things I thi- I believe you're talking about is because of other, you know, there's some drainage improvements and other, you know, physical constraints, what 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 uh would be, you know, what do we need to do to actually construct those quad gates? And that's where that more of that detailed study of, from an engineering standpoint, you know, how you actually design and construct those improvements. Which relates into the proximity of the streets, really, all that, that doesn't really relate to the quad gates. What that relates to is it, rather, you know, another way to accomplish quad gates is to construct a vertical raised median down the center of the street, because that, if you think about it, that accomplishes the same thing. It doesn't allow a car to get out of its lane and go around the gates, right? And but and but at Watkins, because of the proximity of the, those existing streets, you c- you can't put those raised medians unless you're willing to close, close the street. So that's where the discussion of the proximity of the streets, but it, that's not related to the ability to put in quad gates.
Would you get it closed, because you couldn't make a left turn into it, or why, why would you close the street?
Be- because you would not be able to make a left turn out of, so currently you can go.
So you get right only and.
It'd be right only, correct.
Right only in, right only, right only in, and then right only out.
Station line. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it would be right in, right out.
Yeah.
Yeah, which currently, you know, you can turn left onto Watkins and turn left from Watkins on the station line.
Yeah.
Wait, so, I I understand, so if we were, is this as if we were to put in quad gates?
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have put in quad gates if you put a, you know, a barrier in the middle, so that it would block people from.
Have to. Turn.
Well, that may be a better solution.
Get rid of station line.
Might be a better solution. Yeah, first off, I thought at one time when we were redesigning this location, so it's like, oh, we may, that may be a one way.
Yeah.
So we'd turn on the right, it would be.
It's kind of dangerous, I mean.
Then that's a problem, really, that's a problem.
I think one of one of, one of the key conversations as part of your civic center project
Yeah.
was the ability to move through the civic center out to Watkins to get to the park. And if you right turn only that, you're not gonna go through that.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
Well, we would have that away for.
Well, let's talk about that.
My basic, my basic point though, which I think Rick said better than me, is that this is a priority, I don't know. What I'm worried about is we only putting money for a study that we're building into, this is a multi-years, a three-year, a four-year, something process. And and it just feels like it shouldn't have to be that long.
Well, we don't, we have a hundred ten in the budget for.
We don't have a hundred ten. The idea is to move it in.
Costs a million bucks.
That makes it a school year to do that feasibility, if we can do that, then we rebudget a million and a half or whatever it is to do quad gates.
But that's what California. Would you want to move a million bucks at this point in time?
And when do you want us to consider the number?
So this.
The number.
To reconsider, because I think the number's nothing, and a study is gonna probably cost at least that, so I think that that's probably what we're all talking about.
Well, it will come back, yeah.
After we know what our legislative board said.
Okay, so thank you, this was a received only, there is no action on this item, I'd like to.
Madam Mayor, there was a question on the on the station.
Yes.
The one hundred.
The station.
The one thousand.
The one thousand dollars on the station.
Personally, I think we don't do that, because I think whatever we go over that door and box, I think we need to um um do what other safety improvements I think that we see, see there or cause that it's, and just do it ourselves.
If there's, there's, we can't, they're commissioned.
They need to, they want what they, it's necessary to make.
We'll take it away.
Right, I agree.
I want them to take it away.
Termite inspection, which all work kind of.
Termite removal.
I'm gonna go and put some orange oil in there.
So i- if I heard correctly, though, the hundred thousand dollars for the quad gates, we do want to move up into the, coming this way.
The.
Is that, is that for the consultant? We don't know.
Yes.
Yeah, the quad gates.
What is?
Yes.
So the thousand dollars for the inspection of the station.
There's a note.
No. They're moving ninety nine thousand dollars.
Thank you, okay, all right, so uh thank you, um Robert and Mike and Lieutenant Wade for hanging out with us and Mary Grace, uh you did an awesome job tonight, thank you. So I'm sixteen, we have council reports and comments, which um I apologize, I didn't do mine, I think I was uh busy.
I did, I did.
Uh future agenda, I think um you were pretty uh. Any public comments? No, ready to adjourn? I'm sorry, Sharon.
There's notes.